Work. You'll open the public meeting and we'll start by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Drag on, I still don't have that uploaded, but I'll just. This one.
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
So now we're going to use kind of a hybrid remote script as a preliminary matter. This is Justine St. John, Chair of the Select Board. Permit me to confirm all members and persons anticipated on the agenda. President can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jeff?
Here.
David?
Yes, here.
Armand?
Here.
And Chris?
Yes.
All right, thanks, Chris. And I am here. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Greg?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
And I also see a myriad of other staff members as well. Good evening. This open meeting of the Select Board is being conducted in person in the Geanous Room of Town Hall. Some speakers on the agenda will be participating remotely, and we will allow for the public to provide comment via Zoom. The agenda is posted on the town's website and identifies how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All the materials for tonight's meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on Board Docs and recommend that the members and public follow the agenda as posted on Board Docs unless I know it otherwise. Again, the easiest way to find that is to go to the main Town of Maynard page, go to the Select Board site, and then the packet for tonight. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. The Chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, we'll go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, if you're participating via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to help to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields a floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquially with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment as follows. The Chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, we'll call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Public comment for public hearings will only be accepted in person per open meeting law. All right. So that being said, do we have any public comments for this evening? Okay. All right, hearing none. We are actually going to skip down to appointments, item nine on the agenda. We have some police officer appointments this evening. And Chief, would you like to?
Sure.
Start us off?
Wrong, Chris. Good evening. First, let me say this is great to have back in person so you can meet the officers. It's so, so much different on Zoom to when you first have to meet somebody who's being hired by the town. Here, to be brief, to introduce Chris Welborn as a candidate for the new officer. He was one of 28 people that sent in his resume for the position. We interviewed six of that. We took Joe Moore in hand, and Chris is here also. He was very impressive in his interview, especially with his de-escalation story, that he worked at a hospital. You know, you don't have the tools that you have as police officers, so you have to use. You can see he's a little bigger than me. You know, so he could use his site, but you can't, you know, in those kind of settings. So, you know, that was very impressive that he could use that, especially in this day and age, you know, which is very important. He's currently, he was working at Emerson College as a police officer, and he is a graduate of UMass Boston with honors. So I think he's going to be an excellent candidate. I'd like to thank Selectman De Silva, who was liaison and sat in on the interviews with him.
Great, thank you.
He would, he's already full-time academy trained, and he would have a start date of this Thursday on the 15th.
Wow. Very good. All right. Anybody have any questions for Chief or for Chris?
Welcome aboard, Chris.
Thank you.
Just a question, Chief. Would, when you get a new officer like that, that is fully trained, are they active on the street right away? Or do you?
No, no, they still have to go through the whole field training program. They still, he'll have to go through eight weeks of field training, you know, with that.
Obviously, learning the town a little bit, where, where everything is.
Yeah, where everything is, computer systems, you know. Every department has, you know, different policies, procedures that he has to learn and follow, and just, you know, to get acclimated with the entire system.
Chris, did you work at another town too before you worked at the school? Is that what I read in your resume?
Yes, I worked for the city of Cambridge.
City of Cambridge?
Before the school, yeah.
What are your thoughts about?
Small town.
Small town.
Maynard's more kind of what I want in policing, a small-town feel. I feel you can just build better relationships with the community that you're working for. That's just kind of what I want in my career.
Right. As I say, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Forward to seeing you around.
Yeah. And we all miss seeing you around, that's for sure.
I had to break them all, though, hiring too many small people to make myself look like I got there.
Anyone else have anything?
No.
All right. Then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to appoint Christopher Welborn to the Maynard Police Department for an indefinite term with a start date of July 15th, 2021.
I second that.
Thank you, Armand. All in favor? Actually, we can raise our hands.
Yeah, we can do that. We can raise your hand, Chris.
Chris, are you in favor?
Thanks, please.
All right, sounds good. Then congratulations.
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 Welcome aboard.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Do we want to do the other appointment as well? Then you can do both, Joanna, is that?
Whatever you want to do.
All right. That sounds, that sounds good. Then.
Come on up, Alicia.
Sorry, we'll swap for one second. And, hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. Chief?
Okay, I'm again here to present Alicia for appointment, Alicia Luther, for appointment as a new special police officer. Alicia's been with the Maynard Police Department for three and a half years, working as a dispatcher. She's been on her own time, going to the part-time police academy, the Reserve Police Academy, which is about half the time that you have to go for a full-time academy, 372 hours, on, on her own time and done that. She intends to become a police officer later on in career, but this is the first start to getting there, and she gets appointed as a special police officer. She can ride around and do things with the police officers, but the main duties of the special police officers are road details and extra parade control type services. Alicia's been an excellent employee. There have been no issues in, I presented as a special police officer, and I know further down the road that she wants to become a police officer.
Great.
Will you be continuing on as a dispatcher as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Glad to hear that.
Any other questions? I got to meet her a couple times and, and, you know, I appreciate the hard work you've put in so far, and I appreciate the fact that you're doing this on your own and you're, you know, it shows how dedicated you are to, to getting there, so.
Thank you.
That's great.
How long have you been working towards this?
Three and a half years.
Good for you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor? Actually, no, sorry.
We need a motion. I'll move to appoint Alicia Luther as Special Officer to the Maynard Police Department for a term to expire June 30th, 2022.
A second.
Thank you, David. All in favor? Can raise your hand. And then Chris, Chris is in favor. All right.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Welcome to the department, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Joanna, would you like to?
Hi, how are you? I'm Joanna, I'm the town clerk.
Welcome.
Welcome, congratulations. Very excited to be here for you. So I'm going to read, and then you just repeat after me. We could do it consecutively together instead of pulling up each one. So the first would be, would be Chris and then Alicia. I, Christopher Welborn, do solemnly swear.
I, Christopher Welborn, do solemnly swear.
I, Alicia Luga, solemnly swear. That I will be true faith and allegiance. To the commonwealth of Massachusetts. And will support the Constitution and laws thereof. So, how many? Again, I both say your names. Do solemnly swear and affirm. That I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform. Discharge and perform all duties incumbent on me. As the police officer for the Town of Maynard, Massachusetts. According to the rules and the regulations of the. Bylaws of the Town of Maynard. The Constitution of the United States. I swear you both in, effective today, July 13th, 2021. Welcome, thank you.
Thank you very much. Feels good to have a swearing.
Yes, live.
Makes it easier to.
That's for sure.
Yep, absolutely. So are you, I'm sorry.
Just have to go back to the station.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Usually they do the shaking their hands, I know.
Yeah.
This is, this is much better, I appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you, absolutely, thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations, have a great night.
Have a good night. So we all, so while we're doing appointments, we also have an appointment for the Zoning Board of Appeals. And who would like to speak to us about that? I know that it's Peter, but I'm just curious who, who would like to talk about?
I can't.
Certainly, come on up.
I, I can. So Megan Smuto, Assistant Town Administrator. So Peter responded to a, you know, request from Bill Nemser, who is looking for interested residents to serve on Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals. And Peter submitted his application for the Zoning Board of Appeals, and there has been some members, I think, that are resigning, so there's, there's an available space. And so he comes to us. I think you're a pretty new resident, is that right?
I am, I moved in here about a year ago.
Into a very fine neighborhood.
Yes.
So Peter, so tell us a little, we, I did, I did see some of your letter of interest, the questionnaire, which was great. And so I guess the question I have is, have you been involved in town activities in other towns?
No, because I've always rented, and I never really felt attached to any town or city that I lived in. It wasn't until I actually bought a house here where I felt, you know, plugged into the community and wanting to actually be a part of the local government.
And, and why the zoning board? What, what appeals to you? No pun intended.
I'm a real estate attorney.
Oh. That helps.
It's a very interesting topic for me. And I just find anything real estate related interesting, so it felt like a good fit.
Absolutely.
Do you find that you tangle with appeals board, with zoning boards of appeal as a real estate attorney?
I've had a little bit of experience with them. But I felt like I had good experiences with, you know, with those interactions.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions for Peter?
No, I appreciate the detail you put into the, the letter of interest and the questionnaire, which is, just very helpful in understanding who we're going to be working with, so I appreciate that.
All right. Then I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to appoint Peter Winnett as a member of the Board of Appeals with a term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Everybody, and Chris, Chris is in favor as well.
Well, thanks for volunteering.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you.
Peter?
Tomorrow I will be sending you an email to let you know to make an appointment with our town clerk to come in to be sworn in.
Definitely, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, have a great night, take care, good luck.
All right.
On to item 10, right?
Exactly. That's how that works. They said we'd get out of here by eight, no.
Please, no.
All right, so we're going to go back to item number four, which is the board organization for the new fiscal year. So we will, so as part of our Select Board policies that we have been working through, working to update, one of the things that is there is that typically a Chair is, changes pretty regularly, yearly. So I had known that, I had known that when I started this, and I, I take that very seriously. So I do not wish to continue Chair this year as much as I really have loved doing it. I have loved being as involved as I am, but it is time for me to step aside and have someone else have that great job. So with that. So do we just, does someone just move to appoint someone? All right. I will move to nominate Select Board Member David Gavin as Chair of the Select Board for a term of July 1, 2021 through June 30th of 2022.
I second that.
Okay, all right. Are there any other nominations? So then, all in favor? All five of us. So we are all in favor. Congratulations.
Congratulations, David.
Yeah.
You're going to hit him over the head?
I don't know.
By the way, we should also update these, because it should say Select Board.
That's the, yeah, we're still working on that.
You're still working on it.
Thank you to the board. Thank you, Justine, for this past year, and, you know, I hope that we can have a successful year this year, and I look forward to the opportunity to lead the board through what should be a, you know, an exciting year, and here we go. So the, the next item that was on here was a nomination for a Vice Chair. Now, one of the things that when we were preparing the, you know, the, the board, whatever they call the.
Policies.
The policies.
Policies, is that, you know, we really don't have a Vice Chair, per se, on the board. In effect, our clerk runs as or plays the role of Vice Chair as well as clerk, in that if the Chair is not available, the Vice, the clerk acts as the Chair for that given meeting. So I would suggest that unless the board objects, that we really don't need to nominate a Vice Chair, but rather just continue with a, with a clerk. And that is what is proposed in the coming policies that we will be presenting to the board within the next few weeks. So with that, are there any nominations for clerk?
I think Jeff was doing a fine job, he could stay on again.
I'm not surprised to hear. So are there any other, are there any other nominations? Hearing none.
Jeff, are you willing to stay on?
Yes, I'm willing to stay on for another year.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So then, so I, I'll move to nominate the Select Board Member Jeff Swannberg as clerk of the Select Board for a term of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th of 2022.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
All who's in favor.
I'm sorry, that's you.
No, don't worry about it.
And Chris is there as well.
I thought that was automatic, and the new policies, the newest member would be. Still, I thought that was just going to come down the road, might as well jump on it.
Thanks, Jeff. After a couple of years, it's sort of old to be the new person. So all right, then the next item would be to assign our liaison roles. As Chair, I would prefer not to sit on the Budget Subcommittee, which I had been assigned to in years past. I would suggest that we allow Justine to step into that role, given her active role on the budget this year and in years past on the Budget Subcommittee. So from my perspective, looking at, at the list, is there anything that other than the Budget Subcommittee that anybody feels that they want to switch, that they want to step out of, that they would like to take on the role of liaison, switch with somebody? Any thoughts?
I, well, I do want to say that I think that I am not on a lot of committees. I noticed this, I think because I was Chair last time, so I wasn't on a lot of them, so I just want to make sure. I think I am, I actually did take over the Board of Health from Jeff, so I am the liaison for the Board of Health.
Are there any others that you see that you want to?
I want? I'm fine with what I have, but that was my.
Is there anything that you want to drop, David, now that you're the Chair? If, and because Justine took on the Board of Health, I could step in if you wanted to.
Well, I would say to Justine, are there any that I have on my list that you would want to take?
Right.
And if that's the case, I'm fine with, with you taking over.
Do you want me to do, do you want me to do Finance Committee?
Why not, given that you'll be?
And you want, and you just need to take Board of Health, which I think I can do.
I can, no, I can do both, that's okay.
All right.
Yeah, unless you want it, I just, because I, I did, I didn't have as many on there as everybody else, so.
Okay.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Jeff, are you interested in being the, the liaison to the Housing Authority, given your?
That sounds good.
Yeah. Okay, so why don't you jump on that? I don't want to overwhelm you with too many of them.
I think I'll be okay now.
Chris, are there any that you want to step away from? Or step into?
It's not necessarily that I want to step away from any of them, but the Magic, you know, Metropolitan Area Planning Committee? If anybody had an interest in that, I would, I would, I would step aside, and I'm happy to stay, but if anyone else had an interest in it, it's, you know, that's up to anybody else. I'm happy to stay, though. I've been, I've been, I've been on that, it's, you know, it's multi-community, it's the whole region, it's a, it's a, you know, a large, a large group, and I just, if somebody else had an interest in that, you know, I've been on it for several years, so if someone else wanted to weigh in on that, it would not ruin my day, but I'm also happy to stay right where I am.
How about you, Armand? Are there any that you want to, that you want to switch, or?
I'm, I'm good at what I have. I mean, I really haven't been involved so much in the conservation, so I have to admit to that. I mean, I stand, try to see what's going on, but I.
The roles of these people are really supposed to be so that if somebody on these committees have a question.
Questions, right.
They can, they have somebody that they can specifically reach out to.
Yeah.
Not expect necessarily.
Right, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm involved with all the other ones, so I, I could stay with what I have.
And one of the other things is, we do actually have one for, it says Boards Committees and Commissions Without a Liaison. One of them is the Charter.
Oh, yeah.
Charter Review Committee, but I know we have a Charter Review Committee, and I know we, are you?
I am.
Only? Okay, yeah.
Yes.
So you're the liaison for that.
And some of these other ones that aren't filled, I think if we need, if we find a need to fill them, just let us know. If there's an active issue that they need to know about, just let us know. So really, there aren't that many changes from what we've just heard, right? We, Justine and Jeff will be the Budget Subcommittee, and I understand the Finance Committee named their two members last night to, going forward. And I imagine the School Committee will name theirs when they meet, if they haven't already. And then Greg can make an arrangement to have that committee meet for the first time for the fiscal year.
Actually, one question I had is the Master Planning Steering Committee. That is, is that still?
Yeah, it's on.
That is active still?
No, not the Steering Committee, but the.
So like the what? Right, so is that kind of what, so that's morphed into?
Yes.
I would think so.
Okay, all right.
There's a few dormant, not dormant.
Yeah, I'm catching.
Yeah, I saw that Public Works is dormant.
We're going to refresh this.
Well, that's, yeah, they don't have a.
We don't have the Public Works.
If we ever have one, yeah.
We are the Public Works.
The same thing, to a degree, with Parking Authority. I mean, that really isn't, they, they need a liaison for that? Megan's doing such a fine job, what do we need a liaison for? I mean, really, do we need a liaison?
We'd welcome one, of course, if you, if you'd like to.
How often do you, do you meet?
Monthly.
Because I don't, I don't mind jumping on that one.
Great.
Do or do not?
I do.
You're okay with that?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so if any of these other ones, if we see, so Becky, you can make those changes on the master list for us and send it out, and we'll notify the, the Chairs of the various Boards as to who their liaison is and move on from there. Okay. All right. Goal-setting planning for this year, we, I think there's a, we have talked about previously the meeting that we want to have. I think we, we were in agreement, it was going to be July 22nd. Is that still the date that everybody's okay with? Chris, good with that date, 22nd? Yeah? Armand, you're okay?
Yeah.
Jeff, you still good? So, and Greg?
Are we meeting, are we meeting at the country club? What are we doing?
That's, that's the question.
That's, that's what we need to do, is to decide where to meet.
So the, so the country club isn't ready?
Okay.
It's, it's in transition, so it's just not, it's not a good meeting.
So why can't we do the conference room at the police station, or?
We could do that, but I was thinking two alternatives, either Mill and Main. Have you all ever been to the?
Oh, it's nice, that's a big, that's nice.
You have been there?
I've been there.
Okay, so that, that's available, because I just shot an email, and they said it was. Or Open Table, Megan, Megan shot an email over Open Table. It's, sometimes it's nice to do stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just to clarify, Open Table would be the 31 Main Street, their office space, which is next to their regular facility.
It's big enough for all of us.
Yeah, they, they, I said, I asked them, and they.
The one in Mill is really huge, yeah. We'd get lost in that one.
Well, there's two in the conference room.
Oh.
You might be, unless we're talking about the same thing, but when you go like kind of to the upper parts, where that's where the big conference room is, and you're right, it's like a, it's like a, it's like an, I don't know, a shell shaped and it points down like a theater step.
Yep, right.
But before you go through those doors into the theater, to the right is a smaller conference room.
Okay.
And it's probably half the size.
What's the preference? What's the preference?
I think, I think the Mill's pretty cool.
I think it's nice to do that, yeah.
Oh, there you go. So, it's a, it's a good change of pace. I'm actually grateful to Open Table to even, you know, they were very receptive. We have a good relationship with them, so I was glad that I'm here. Same with Mill and Main, and I think that's, I try to keep them close, and I'm sure you all do, too. So, Mill and Main's my vote, but mostly for the novelty of going in.
I'm on Mill and Main. We had it there many, many years ago, and it wasn't, right when you walked in, you had to go.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, I, we'll have to be escorted out there, because it's been a long time.
We had to climb, climb through, you know, these things. It was like climbing on Alpevers by the time you were done. And then leaving, if you don't leave with somebody, you're going to be in there for the night.
That's right. But I, I do, I do like it. I think it's a, I think it's a really interesting setting, so that's my vote.
Yeah.
Okay. And are we going to do like pizza or something like that?
Good.
What's the plan?
We hadn't really thought about that, but we could.
Although we have it scheduled for seven, right?
Yeah, I think it's, I'm okay with not eating, without eating.
Yeah, okay, then we don't need that.
Okay. Don't be surprised if there's snacks.
Are you okay with that?
Oh, yeah, no, that's totally fine.
I'm sorry.
That sounds good.
Justine and I'll bring her own pizza.
Okay, then we need to, we'll work on, well, it's our topics, or the ones we'll bring up. That's the purpose of the meeting, so we don't really, we'll have to work on an agenda other than just.
Right, right.
Okay.
Very good.
All right. Next topic is the acceptance of the minutes in a June 15th, 2021 meeting. Is there a motion to accept?
So, I'll move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of June 15th, 2021, as shown.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, concerns, questions? All right, hear and none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chris?
Oh, that's not Chris.
There he is.
He's up there.
I see it, I see his hand.
I saw his hand. Chris said aye.
Yep.
All right, we'll move on. Correspondence. Is there a motion to accept correspondence?
There's a little, there's a little typo on F. Instead of patio, it says pasios. Extensions of pasios.
I will move to accept and approve correspondences A through I as shown.
Second, moved in second, any discussion?
My one question is, item A, the letter from, from Matt. I'm wondering if there's, you know, I appreciate that he took time to, to put together such a great letter to us. A lot of his proposals unfortunately are on, you know, was to do things that are on property that we don't own or we don't really have control over in that way, and unfortunately, we don't have the funding. I think it's important to kind of keep the kids in mind as far as, you know, when we do start making improvements to different things, how we can, you know, work different things in so it can be more appealing to more kids. But I'm wondering if there's, you know, should we have Greg write a letter back? I'd really like him to get some kind of response.
He did ask for a response, so I would, I think the board should respond back.
It's only right, it's only right, it's only right.
Be nice to have him come in to see a meeting, you know, invite him to a meeting, if possible, even just.
Do you want me to do that?
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
If he wants to come in and observe, or just come in and say hello. We don't get many letters from young kids that are interested in what's going on in town, and so.
I will.
This is somebody that we, he might be a volunteer someday, so.
Yeah.
Cool.
Be enjoyable to have him here, just to thank him for his letter and to see if he has any other ideas. Any other comments or questions or concerns on the correspondence? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Chris?
Chris?
Aye.
Chris is an aye. All right, we move on to the Board Statement on Anti-Asian Violence, and I'm going to turn this over to Greg to give us sort of a background detail on how this came to be, not, not the news aspect, but how it came to be relative to the, to how it, we've been asked to endorse this letter.
Right, and so the, so the board had been asked, actually, it was also kind of organic within the board itself. But there was, it was kind of like, two train of thoughts. One was to do specifically against whatever the topic at hand may be. In this case, it is anti-Asian violence. And then the, the other one was maybe to do more of a generalized statement. And the board had, had figured, let's, let's coordinate with the Human Relations Committee, who had also been considering the statement, as you can see, was provided. And Chris Silva is a representative, the liaison to that, and said they will work with the HRC. So, you can see, probably for the board and for the public, the letter that was drafted by the HRC, which could be considered by this body for co-adoption. Separately, that more generalized statement is a topic of discussion that I believe the board had wanted to put on for the July 22nd meeting. So, that, that is on that agenda as well. So, we did, so we got this, I reached out to Kathleen Fitzgerald, she's the, she's the chair of the HRC, and she provided this letter.
And I have, I have no issues with signing on the letter as a board. I don't know if it should just be the chair or if it should be signed by the entire board, but I have no issues. Anybody else with comments?
I feel the same way. I feel like, you know, I, I feel bad that, that we didn't get it, you know, I didn't get on the agenda earlier. But I'm glad that we're addressing it now.
And unfortunately, I mean, even in the last two days, there've been stories in the paper, in the Globe, on just this issue that it's, it's not a one-off.
Yeah.
An issue that we need to be aware of, so what are the thoughts on the entire board individually signing it or just the chair?
I think just the chair, that's just me, I don't know how you guys feel.
Well, I feel like in, you know, I feel the whole board supports it, but I think the chair probably signs because Kathleen signed as the Human Relations Committee Chair.
That's fine. Okay, so we should probably take a motion to approve, so any, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve endorsement of the Human Relations Committee's Anti-Asian Violence Letter as presented.
Second.
Moved in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, Chris was a yes as well. All right, consent agenda, reappointments to boards and committees. I believe we have.
I don't think we do have.
No, there's nothing there.
So, that was, so I apologize for the confusion. We, that was like a catch-all that we, as you, for the last couple of weeks, we've been having on here, but we don't have anything for this.
Local emergency planning people, okay.
No.
All right, we already did number nine, so we move on to number 10, which is the extension of the permitting for outside dining. And so, turn it over to Megan.
Sure, so on June 16th, the governor extended certain COVID-19 emergency measures, and one of them was to allow the local licensing authority to extend the outdoor premises, or the Extension of Premises Program through April 1st, 2022. So, I put it out to the restaurants who've been participating in the program, and this is not a full list, but it's the list that I have today. I think I will have the rest of them at the next meeting, but I wanted to make sure, you know, we got these in because if they are not renewed, their license will expire on August 15th. So, these are extensions for Babaco's, Elks, Pleasant Cafe, Serendipity and Amory's Tomb. And there'll be additional businesses, I believe, on the next agenda, once they've been vetted by staff.
And Megan, did the legislation signed by the governor specifically cite April 1st, 2022 as the extent, as far as we can go?
Yes, and so, we have been working on a local program for, you know, this board to consider for next spring. And I think I did a presentation a few, a few months ago about that, and I've been working with town council on, you know, on that. So, we'll have something ready that hopefully this summer and, you know, considered and reviewed by the board so that we will have a seamless process next spring. We'll receive all the applications and have them all reviewed so that we can move forward, you know, to the extent that the board's comfortable.
Any questions on the board?
One question I have is, so, so Lobitos and Serendipity, I, I have no problem extending it, but they're not liquor licenses. Are we just doing it because or?
Yeah, they're not liquor licenses, but it was, they were all kind of grouped together in the Extension of Premises Program.
Mostly for outdoor seating, so it's not just liquor, I mean, right?
Right, right, and we did, before COVID, we did have a, an outdoor dining program that Serendipity took advantage of. So, but, you know, this kind of brought a lot of different questions, so we really have revised the types of things we're asking. So, now we're going to kind of group everyone together. And the liquor license ones have to go to the ABCC, of course, but the others are still more local approvals.
Okay.
There were some concerns expressed by some businesses down on Main Street that are not restaurants, that are concerned about losing spaces that otherwise would go to people that might be running in and out of their spots. Have, have we reached out to them at all, and if not, maybe the EDC can work with those groups to, to those individual businesses to try to make sure that their concerns are being addressed as well?
I also think that, Megan, you're dealing with that through the Parking Authority.
Both the Parking Authority and the Economic Development Committee, yes. We have, when I was working, before the governor extended this program, we didn't know if there would be, you know, an extension after August 15th. So, there was a real rush to see if we could work on a local program. And so, when I, when we were working on that, I did a presentation to the Economic Development Committee, the Parking Authority and the Maynard Business Alliance, and, you know, heard from the public, including businesses on Main Street, about some of their concerns, and I think that we have addressed them in a few different ways. One of them is that last year, we added five parking spaces on Main Street through the partnership with Green Star Herbal. So, those have been lined, and that's, that's additional parking on that main corridor.
And they're metered already, too. They have meters on there.
Yeah, I believe, yeah, I think that, are they there?
It looked nice.
It completed last week, yes.
Hmm, miss that.
They're a little taller than our little ones.
Well, we're out of meters.
I haven't noticed that, so the new meters are down further on the street?
By Green Star, like towards McDonald's.
We also metered additional parking spaces on Main Street in that block in question that had been inconsistent with the parking plan on the main corridors downtown. So, that's, even though it's not new parking, it is parking that will have about our turnover. And so, yeah, I think we've addressed a lot of the concerns with the businesses. We've had a really good relationship, you know, with the businesses that have reached out to me through, through my roles on both committees, and I think we've found some positive ways to, to work together to make this work for, for the, all businesses. Because really, you know, when, when people come to drive through Maynard and are going to these restaurants, they can really look around and see, you know, what else is available, and so the hope is not to just benefit the businesses that have additional square footage. It's really to, you know, make Maynard a destination and encourage people to come back and, you know, see things that they might not have seen if they were just driving by. So, really, the goal is to benefit everyone in this cultural district, and I, I think that we've made strides to do that, and I hope we'll continue.
Along these lines, although not directly related to the extension, I did note that that there's like this new structure on Main Street. Did that have to be approved at all through?
You talking about Alzucker?
Rick and, and through DPW and the police and fire and?
That, yeah, that one, that was vetted through staff, and it, it was an adjustment, so it, it did come through the board as well.
It came through here? Oh, I don't remember that.
Yeah.
Because I, maybe I just didn't realize.
I was going to say the same thing. I didn't realize until I saw it with my, with my eyes.
It looked, I think maybe it looked a little different in black and white on that, but.
Yeah, okay. All right, so is there a motion or any, any further questions? Chris, anything? Is Chris still there?
So, Chris had to sign off.
Chris left?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did, I was talking to Frank the other day, and he has said that he has had new business come in, and he asked him how they found out about him, and he said they were driving through and literally saw the outdoor dining and decided to stop by, so it's just, you know, pretty direct evidence that, that.
Yeah, he said 50% of his business is coming from surrounding towns, which is good.
That's great.
Yeah.
Very good. So, we can take a motion on this?
Move to approve the applications for temporary extension of premises, outdoor dining area on private property slash parking lot slash municipal right-of-way extension request submitted by the Pleasant Cafe, Babaco's, Maynard, Clinton Lodge of Elks, Serendipity and Amory's Tomb through April 1st, 2022, which approvals are subject to compliance with the terms and conditions of the board's policy and subject to compliance with the plans submitted, which plans are incorporated into the original approval decisions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Given that Chris is no longer online, we do not need to go to Chris, but all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. We move on to Department of Public Works items. There are four of them that we're ready to discuss. The first one is a discussion relative to parking on Maple Street. Greg, I don't know if you want to take over as to how this came to be, or if you want to turn it to Justin, but I think you got it before Justin did.
I did, and so I was reached out, I can see, are you Daniel Fulton?
Oh, you muted.
Have we unmuted him?
Oh, yeah, he's muted.
Aye, yeah, aye, yeah, that's me.
So, Fulton had reached out to me back in November, and you can see, because I'm, I'm apologetic about it, but I am upfront. I didn't see the email until a little while later, but they, they had asked me to have the town consider reducing the traffic on Maple, on Maple Street. They were interested in either, you know, making a one-way street or reducing parking on one side. So, I asked for Justin DiMarco, the Director of Public Works here, and for the Chief of Police, Mike Noble, to weigh in. And you can see some of the traffic back and forth as we were trying to figure out what might be the best recommendation. So, I, I don't have a recommendation for you right now. I have, in the recommended action, to consider the installation of one-way parking, because that seemed to be kind of how we, how we ended it, the conversation between myself and Justin and Chief Noble. But it's no, there's no clear right answer, so I wanted to hear how the board felt about it. If you have questions now, you can hear from Justin, but we, it was, you know, our thoughts were already put into this. Or you can hear from the Foltons, if you would like.
Yeah.
I'd like to.
Mr. Fulton, how, how did this all come to be, and just a little bit of background as to what led you to write to us?
So, my wife, Kate Fulton, wrote the email, but I'm in agreement with her in that we found over the last seven years that there've been quite a few accidents, mainly with parked cars here on Maple Street. And we find that on Maple Street, people are not obeying the speed limit, and they're moving very rapidly up and down the street. So, we're concerned. We're a family of five. We have three children. My neighbor's right behind us, you can see the car behind me. They have two children. My neighbor's across the street have two children. We were very concerned that there was going to be an accident that would involve one of our children, unfortunately, because of the repetitive accidents on the street. So, we wrote to the town and asked if we could get the, the street changed to a one-way street. And the recommendation in the email was to have the parking changed to one way. To be honest with you, I don't support that. I, I, I think it would make Maple Street even more of a, a street in which people travel down it very, very quickly when they shouldn't be. So, we're, we're here to say, if one-way street is not a good idea, then let's just leave it as is. Because, at least with the parking that we have on both sides of the street, it, it does somewhat mitigate the fast speeds going down our street, especially during rush hours, during the regular school and business time between September and, say, June.
So, don't, don't you think that if you do it one-way, people will speed even more?
Yeah, that's exactly right, and that's what I don't, I, well, I, I don't know if they'll speed it even more, because I think that if they go one way, they're, they're going to at least cut our speeding in half. They tend to speed during the rush hour one way or the other way at the end of the rush hour in an effort to cut through and not have to go through town in the lights. So, we were of the opinion that maybe it would help. But if the DPW doesn't think it will help, and I'm not going to argue with their wisdom, I am not a traffic engineer in any way, shape or form, and I, I'd rather it stay the same than be changed at this point.
Any other questions from the board at this point?
Have we considered any other mechanisms of speed bump or reduction in the speed limit that is posted?
So, the speed limit is one of the lowest default speed limits that we can have.
It's, was it 35?
Ah, no, 30, I believe.
It's at 30, right?
Yeah, 30. We can get down to 25. There is the adoption policy that we've discussed several, several times, but it is already a posted speed limit road, so that's, that default speed limit actually wouldn't apply for this situation. We would have to adopt a new speed limit. That is something the board can consider. At this point, enforcement is your strongest ally, because typically, if the speeds are in excess of 30 miles an hour, 30 miles an hour for a road of Maple Street, Brook Street area is, is a small speed limit. That's not as fast as you would, would imagine. The constraints that we have with Maple Street is the intersection connection of Brooks and Summer. So, turning it into a one-way changes traffic patterns that will affect Brook Street as well. So, the cut-through pattern is really pushing one to another. The constraints we have with both Maple and Brooks, they're very similar in nature, where they have two sidewalks and there is dense housing, where there is an overflow of parking on the roads. It looks like a corridor of cars in both directions. It is your typical urban situation that you would see in an inner-city situation. It is your typical urban situation that you would see in an inner-city situation. So the recommendations by myself and bouncing off of Chief Noble was how things are addressed in urban environments, where you push one side off to another, where you can control the corridor. Typically, the accidents are caused from sight visibility issues from the parked cars. So to Mr. Fulton's situation, if you're looking to reduce speed, switching parking to one side isn't necessarily gonna reduce speed. Enforcement's gonna reduce speed at this point. One-way traffic pattern just pushes one problem to somebody else's problem. So we'd be creating Maple Street's problem and increasing it onto Brook Street, because that same situation would apply there. And the intersection is really where the safety concern is. Transforming that intersection is a costly endeavor as well, and that's why it has never really been done at this point. I'm in favor of looking for enforcement, maybe an uptick in enforcement, maybe watching that area a little closer. Also, for safety, pedestrian safety, looking at enforcement of parking on pedestrian sidewalks, ticketing, warnings. We want to make sure our sidewalks are safe to travel, which would then keep and reduce the potential impact of pedestrian vehicular accidents. So if Mr. Fulton's children want to go down to Memorial Park and the sidewalk's blocked, we're now forcing them to go into the street where there could be excessive speeds. That's not something we want. We do have an issue with excessive parking on sidewalks throughout Maynard. This has been brought up on several occasions, and it continues to happen. So I think, I think maybe having another conversation with, maybe looking at this area as a whole and trying to uptick some enforcement might help reduce this.
And also maybe, I'm sorry. The enforcement issue is, is key. One question or one possible solution, and again, it would need to be studied. I'm not one who likes to jump into, you know, making snap decisions without studying things. But we've seen in other, where, other places in town, especially since Mr. Fulton mentions that this seems to happen during rush hour, you put up no left turn during certain hours.
Yep.
Specifically the rush hour time.
Mm-hmm.
And if it's no left turn coming from the Sudbury, I mean, from the Stowe direction, seems to me that somebody who's looking to do what Mr. Fulton described as avoiding the lights is not gonna go through the light in order to take a right-hand turn. So that probably wouldn't be a problem. Rather, the people coming from Stowe who don't want to sit in the, at the light at Mason Street, prevent them from taking that left, and that reduces the amount of traffic that the Maple Street area is seeing. That's, that's possible. I don't know if the traffic study would show that.
You're not, you're not wrong on that. So it would have to be studied.
Then you've got traffic coming in the other direction that we'd have to do the same thing. Then the residents have that issue of how do I get home? And that's where...
It would be open to residential, but really, again, with signage, it's enforcement.
Yeah.
So CVS, no left turn.
No kidding. Oh, you could just sit there and watch everybody turn.
So without enforcement, I mean, at this point, we're just really kind of masking the issue. I think a presence there and an uptick in trying to reduce what is the impacts, which is sight visibility, moving pedestrians from designed corridors out into non-safe areas can reduce all of that. I think that is something that we should, we should kind of look at.
And we should look at consideration, because in my opinion, we talked about this thickly settled. Usually, thickly settled does not mean 30 miles an hour, it means 25 miles.
Correct, yep.
So that's something we should consider about.
So that was the default situation that we could adopt as a whole, as a community? So when you adopt that, Mass General Law, for the default of thickly settled 25, that's for all unmarked roads? So sadly, with, with Maynard, that doesn't help us that much, because Maynard has a number of marked mile-per-hour lane miles, roadways that are already pre-designated through Mass DOT, through the boards of the past. You could adopt the change of Maple Street singular, but that would have to be brought up as a motion for the board to adopt. That can be done. The adoption of the blanket 25 miles an hour will only affect a small portion of Maynard's roads. Most of Maynard's roads are already pre-marked. So you would have to potentially look at that individually.
So why don't we have you, Greg, and the Chiefs talk about various options? And if you think it's necessary, come back to the board with some alternatives for us to consider. Keep the folks over on Maple Street informed of what's going on, so that, you know, everybody understands that we're looking into it, trying to find a solution. Mr. Fulton, thank you for bringing this to our attention and your concern. And this is, you know, why we're here, is so that we can address some of these concerns and make sure that people aren't thinking that they have no place to go when they have concerns. So thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for at least putting this on the agenda. We appreciate it and appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. So let's leave it at that?
Yeah, I guess maybe, yeah. Quick, I know I've seen a, a report showing the number of accidents at various intersections, a heat map or something similar. Can you provide me that for, for future education? I think I saw it from Bill Nemser at one point, but...
Yeah, the chief has that data.
Yeah, maybe that was there, but...
Okay.
I know we were talking about some other intersections, so...
Yes.
All right.
Can I ask a question?
Go right ahead.
Just, one of the things you were talking about, Justin, that you mentioned is the fact that, that it is a problem throughout town as far as parking on sidewalks. Have we ever thought of, and I realize people who park on sidewalks, park on them because they're convenient, whatever, but has there ever been a thought of doing some kind of public education as far as the wear and tear on the sidewalk, why it's hurting our resource, infrastructure, things like that?
So...
I, I don't know.
The premise is it hurts the infrastructure, but it doesn't. What it hurts is the safety liability issues. You're forcing pedestrians to either go around, you know, we, we've had a number of complaints, and there's even a small group within town that are really adamant about this situation. And they're not necessarily wrong. If you have a car that's fully in, in blocking a sidewalk, for accessibility for ADA, you're forcing someone with a wheelchair into a situation that creates barriers and blockades. But even just someone walking their dog now has to maneuver into a roadway, which creates the impact. Eliminating or just enforcing that effort in a town-wide enforcement, and would, I think the best way to do that is, it really is a cultural issue. I think it's been something that's just been happening for years, and it's been allowed without, you know, repercussions. An education piece is probably the best way to start that. But I think warnings are part of that education piece, because, perfect example is the bridge with Florida Road. The DPW has signed it. We have dropped letters, detailed letters like our memos on windows for over a month and a half, and those residents do not move. They are well aware of what the situation is, but we do not look scary in an enforcement in a memo. A ticket, a warning ticket starts to show a little bit of teeth, like, hey, we mean business a little bit. We're not here to slap you with a $50 fine right off the cuff, but a warning creates that conversation. And why it's important. It goes to dispatch, it goes to the police station, then they can start to kind of go over an overall function of why this is important to the community, looking for pedestrian safety. We're not trying to, you know, take parking away from you. We're just trying to make sure the corridors that are designed properly manage that system. So I think that's the best approach.
I agree. Okay. Thanks. So now we move on to jet vac truck. Justin, you can take it over.
All right, thanks, David. By the way, congratulations, David.
Thanks.
And good job last year, Justine as well, and all of the board members. I know Chris isn't here, but you guys had a tough year last year. So, so the motion in front of you is for the replacement of our current jet vac, which we went through town meeting and requested an article through our retained earnings funding source from our sewer retained earnings, which this vehicle is a primary operations vehicle for our sewer collection system, our sewer pump stations, and provides secondary functions as our hydrovac excavation process. And it also provides functions through our MS4, which is our sub-water, I'm sorry, our subsurface drainage system. The jet vac that we currently have is over 20 years old, and over 50% of its function doesn't even operate anymore. And the repairs are beyond our capabilities and beyond the scope of funding that we would be willing to put forward. So we have worked diligently, and we follow the state of Massachusetts blanket contracts through the procurement process. And the Western Star chassis is through ATG, which used to be Tri-State. And the sewer vac equipment is an outfit process that goes on that system, which provides the vac system, the jet system, and pretty much all of the equipment that is needed for our sewer collection system. In front of you, we're looking to make sure that we can continue to move forward and have the contract signed, and we can start to procure this piece of equipment. I will tell you that material, equipment in general tends to take a long time to see. With material delays due to COVID, we may not see this piece of equipment for over a year, even if we sign today.
I don't know why.
So we're just trying to get in the queue, as most communities in Massachusetts have a fiscal year of July 1st to July 1st. So you can imagine everybody's scrambling to try to get their pieces of equipment in the queue, as am I, so...
Sounds like the, the, trying to get the paving companies on board when it's, you know, July 1 comes around.
Yeah, absolutely.
And this, this funding was approved by town meeting, what, two years ago, is it, or a year and a half ago?
It was annual town meeting.
What, what year was that, this year?
Almost two years.
Yep, no, recent.
Oh.
A recent annual town meeting.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, we've been, so even before prior approvals, especially with blanket contracts, I can start to do the work behind the scenes so that we're not waiting for approval. There's no penalty, even if town meeting said no. All of the work with the sales rep in advance doesn't, we don't get in trouble for it. So I try to get ahead of things, knowing the delays in lining up the outfits and lining up everything. So we were already somewhat prepared. It's also why the article was $500,000. As you can see, we're pretty close. I knew what our rough estimates were. There was some, we wish that our trade-in value was higher, but we anticipated that it wasn't, it was almost nothing. We were lucky at this point to even see a potential return on the trade value. So we're well within what we thought we were gonna be.
And where will this be stored? At the farm?
So storage is a constraint for the DPW now, never mind anything new. So currently, our old jet vac will be traded in, so we won't be adding a piece of equipment. We'll be swapping a piece of equipment. The equipment that we have is small enough and long enough that it will actually fit in our garage. So that is the goal. We did also look at winterization products within this, so that if we get into a situation where we have some constraints, we could park it outside. It has cold water, heaters, everything that, if we had to, we can just have it on-site in the garage, so, yeah.
Just curious, what's the status of the, the tent that the fire truck is...
So, my, yeah, myself and Greg talked about that roughly, probably a couple of years ago, I'm, I'm sorry, a couple of months ago, actually, a couple of weeks ago. I think we had a, it was a meeting about three weeks ago, when, when we talked about what the reuse situation was, and I think you presented a reuse committee as, as an idea for the fires, firehouse.
I'm considering, we're still early stages of...
I'm not, I'm not talking about using that as an area to store trucks.
No, but the, correct.
No, we don't, we're not, yeah, we want to keep it.
Yeah.
So we own it, then?
Yeah. Currently, we own it, yeah. So, but the reuse situation could have a developer move that as mitigation. There's a number of ways around, you know, right now, we don't have the cost to take it. Yes, we own it, but we would still have to pay for...
Don't get me started on that. And let's move all our trucks over to where the fire truck is.
Right. No, no, it would not, it would need to be stored at the DPW yard as it is, it's sold, well, its primary purpose is an emergency response vehicle. So the, you know, it needs to be on a site where our, our staff in the middle of the night for sewer main break, I mean sewer block, sewer main break, water main break, anything that we're responsive with that vehicle as quick as possible, so...
Any comments, questions from the board? All right, the motion?
Move to approve the contract with Advantage Truck Group LLC for the purchase of one Western Star jet vac tractor with outfit from Sewer Equipment Company of America in the amount of $495,517.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Next topic, well for and foray treatment plant.
All right, so I'm very excited to get to this point. I know some of you have been along for the ride. So we, we have tentative approval for withdrawal from Mass DEP. Recently, they also, when they do a withdrawal amendment, has our 20-year permit, which is what well foray would be. It's a new water source under our current permit for water withdrawal, so it's an amendment of our current water withdrawal permit. Public comment is a 30-day grace period, which has actually just ended recently. So this is, things are kind of aligning exactly how it should be. So we did receive, there is some subsequent material that we asked to, to provide in board docs. As you can see, there was some public comment. But we're happy to say, depending on how DEP feels, they can take some of that public comment and then add it as a restriction or capture it in our amendment withdrawal. So we don't have final withdrawal, but we're 98.9% there. And I have a meeting scheduled with DEP on Thursday morning to go over our sanitary survey, our well foray design processes, and our withdrawal permit, and try to capture everything in one shot. So my request in front of you today is the full engineering plan, which is the final engineering plan to capture our brand-new water source, well foray, which is phase one of our water capacity increase in capital plan, and the treatment processes to onboard that new well source, which is green sand filters to take out the iron and manganese, all of the original anticipated treatment processes for well foray. I will tell you that I think we discussed at our last meeting, the situation regarding PFAS and our current situation. Treatment Plant Four is one of our areas where we are somewhat concerned. We're not in violation, but we are monitoring that, as we discussed before. So during this full engineering design, we pivoted a little bit, and we addressed what is PFAS and organics removal, as those are two issues that we are consistently dealing with there. Now, we did not incorporate treatment processes into the design, because that would drastically increase the price. But what we can do is think smart and effectively in our full engineering plans, where we actually design the footprint to house the future treatment processes. That is incorporated in this engineering plan, where the piping is capped, but designed in a manner where we can plug and play the future model that is PFAS removal, organics removal, to make sure that we do not violate, or if we violate, we can react quickly in a manner that's already happening. Meaning, we're about to bid this process out, we're about to actually build block and build roofs. So if we're ahead of that curve now, we can react quicker in the future if we do violate and we need to react. So this engineering plan incorporates that footprint.
All right. Questions from the board? I have a question. I'm not, I'm not a scientist, not a geologist, not a hydrologist. Just curious, so it's a two-part question. First off, are we confident that, that well foray location continues to produce the water that we think it would have produced at the time that we did? Because we know that just a little shake in the world can change...
You're not wrong. Actually, well foray is the most complex well we're gonna have in regards to pump rates. And part of it is based off of its location and its, its close proximity to endangered species habitat. So part of the reason that well foray's permitting took so long was the pump rates, meaning when you drill the well, we pump to see how the recharge rate happens, meaning the actual hydrology. But there was a secondary impact, which is the surface water swamp area that is habitat for endangered species, which is landing turtles. So just because the straw can pump X amount, the impact to the species habitat also had to be studied. So we actually, within our agreed amendment with DEP, our maximum pump rate isn't even allowed based off of the habitat impact. So they minimized what our pump rates are gonna be. We're still pretty confident that we're gonna see .25 million gallons a day, which is still a good well source for us. We were hoping originally for .33, which is about a third of a million gallons a day. .25 is still worth the investment. Some of our wells, actually, majority of our wells, don't produce that now. So it's still worth the investment. It also adds to what you'll hear DEP continually refer to, if you read through the sanitary survey, is redundancy. Right now, there's pros and cons to having three separate facilities. The con is there's a giant operational expense to having three separate facilities. The pro is that we're not reliant on one facility, and when it fails, everything shuts off. off. But we technically currently are right now, but our plan, our three pa, three-phase plan, will actually reduce that rate, so that we can rest a treatment plant and rest a source, and start to manipulate how we produce water in a manner that saves from certain deterioration that we have continually done to ourselves with lack of investment for long periods of time. The loss of White's Pond and, you know, started that process, and it really hasn't caught up. You'll see, when we get to the sanitary survey, some of the recommendations, as we've consistently discussed with DEP, are not viable. We would actually have to turn off water and faucets. That's not okay. So, we want to get there, and this is one step to allow for redundancy. We would love to get to a point where we have the ability to produce 3 million gallons a day, 1 million from each plant, which would allow us to rest a plant a day, if we had to at peak times, and, uh, sometimes two plants. That is what most utilities of our customer base have the ability to produce. We are well below that. We are permitted higher than we can actually physically produce, because our wells are deteriorating. They are 50 years old plus. This new well source does allow for limited use. Well four is currently in that similar location, and well four goes back to one of our first well sources off of White's Pond. So, White's Pond was our fir, one of our first water sources, and well four was to supplement the summer increases, and that goes back, you know, over 50 years. So, well four A will also help rest that well source as well.
Then my follow-up question to the fact that we're confident that we'll be, still be able to pump water, is there any concern that the change in the, uh, that the development over at, at Parker Street is changing the underwater flow? And the reason I bring that up is I'm hearing from people over on Field Street that there is flooding where it wasn't flooding before.
So, that's a little different. I actually, I can address that, I was there today inspecting it. So, that is due to, um, a redevelopment of a singular house with a designed road that actually only had one side designed to handle surface water. So, the change in topography of that one development, which was, uh, a brand-new septic, changed, a, a lot of roads in Maynard actually don't have subsurface drainage. We have a lot of internal subsurface drainage, but like Acton Street just naturally drains off to the sides, is lost, um, you know, to yard space. The same was Field Street, but Field Street was only designed, it was designed with the crown like it should be, but only one side was designed to handle stormwater. I don't know how it ever got approved, but it did get approved. So, now the other side, as those topography changes, now the water just sits. So, myself and Wayne Amico went there today. We're going to mock up, um, a small modification that will allow for movement over of subsurface drainage systems. We're still gonna, we still need to see what the costs are and see how we prioritize that in our operating budget, but that's not due to Maynard Crossing. But, to answer your question, we are concerned with the hydrology change, um, but what we're more concerned with is the fact that the hydrology change could impact our PFAS levels. So, our PFAS levels are already impacted in that location, and if there was a change in the aquifer, a lot of DEP's requirements with PFAS aren't completely executed and fully studied. There's a lot of unknowns of where it's coming from. It is something that can go back into the air, come as rainwater, and affect an aquifer that was never affected before. That's what a lot of communities are now finding. When we first saw numbers, um, over six months ago, there was a lot of areas that almost had zeros, that are now, you know, drastically increasing. Part of that is testing, as, as myself and Jeff have discussed before, too, is finite testing, but they are finding with pump rates now, summer is the peak. So, you have irrigation systems, even though we have, you know, water mandates, you still have what is our peak situation. And when you start to draw down, you're hitting aquifer channels that don't typically get drawn, so you're pulling situations in. So, we could be pulling PFAS in, and a lot of communities are dealing with this now. Ours has been a slow incline, and, and we are awaiting some more results to kind of see how that, that data builds us. That's more of our concern than water capacity. Typically, when you have a development like Maynard Crossing, um, you're actually pooling water, so they're, they're actually providing us with centralized, uh, recharge. Old Marlboro, we now have a water quality issue because of all the development. We do not have a lock, lack of water. It's practically a surface water area over there, so now we wanna tap that straw and drain it all out. We just need to, we need to treat it. So, at this point, those things kind of benefit us, but on other facts, they hurt us. Water quality's one of them.
Any follow-ups to that? Okay, there a motion?
I could do that. Move to approve the agreement with Stantec Consulting Services for final design development of well four A and water treatment plant upgrades at the Green Meadow Treatment Facility Number Four in the amount of $268,530.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? And motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, if you'll pardon the interruption for a minute, um, I'm looking at the, ahead of the agenda for a couple, two, uh, the American Rescue Plan Act, and I shouldn't have asked this to Justin before, so I'm sorry for throwing you on the spot right now. Some of your recommendations or requests to use the American Rescue Plan Act does, does involve Treatment Plant Four.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Is it a coincidence that about the same amount of money you just asked for the board to approve, or am I, could you clarify any, the relationship between your request for ARPA, which is about $250,000?
Yeah.
That's another $35,000, which is refreshing, man.
So.
Is that, is, is one covering the other?
Yes and no. So, because I can't, we've already aligned phase one of our water capacity plan. We've asked for two borrowings and received two borrowings. One was $1 million for well four A, I'm sorry, $1.5 million for well four A, and $1 million recently for the treatment plant upgrades to handle well four A. My ARPA requests are based on the fact that PFAS has hit us recently, and to pivot and design now would benefit us on the long run of saving costs in the future. And the unknown of what that process from an actual bidding construction standpoint is, is why my ARPA request was 1.5 to 3 million, because I don't know how much the actual cost is until the full design is done, and the full design will hammer out what the costs of the footprint, the size of the footprint, the size of the roofing expansion, all of these unknown variables. So, that's why in our, my ARPA request, there was a prioritized pattern, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and that prioritized pattern follows our water capacity capital plan. All ARPA funds that could potentially be allocated to water and sewer will help offset future costs to water rate users. As of right now, we already have captured $2.5 million in our rates over the past two years with our rate increases, which is the 1.5 million for four A, and the 1 million for the treatment plant process. Incorporating PFAS or organic removal will most likely go over that 2.5 million, so ARPA will subsidize that if my request is fulfilled, and depending on what that overage is, will depend on where we go from our next ARPA allocation. So, let's just imagine, there's still a lot of unknown costs with this, but let's imagine that we're over roughly about $500,000 to add the size footprint we need to handle a modular system for PFAS in the future. ARPA would subsidize that instead of going back to the user, uh, going back to the water and sewer rates and asking for an increase, or going to debt service, 'cause we can't handle another $500,000 under our operating budget, we would debt for that. So, that would subsidize that. The remaining ARPA funds that are allocated to water and sewer would directly go to Phase Two, which is our largest phase, which is Old Marlboro Road. Old Marlboro Road's treatment facility needs to handle water quality issues that it currently deals with now. That's the water that we get complaints about. Those are the neighborhoods of Tobin Drive, all those areas where we see water quality issues, sometimes at an alarming rate. We also have a permitted water source at Old Marlboro Road, which is permitted at a half a million gallons a day, a well source that we had to shut down due to water quality issues several dozen years, um, several years ago. If we utilize our ARPA funds, we could capture water capacity, resolve water quality issues, and Old Marlboro Road has the ability for a future well source, which we would explore as well. When I go back to my conversation where I said redundancy in well sources and treatment plants of 1 million gallons, 1 million gallons, 1 million gallons, that's the goal. Old Marlboro Road potentially could reestablish itself as our primary treatment location of a 1 million gallon plant for half the cost of the White's Pond studies situation. ARPA funds would be used to supplement all of the needs for increases in water and sewer to address that specific. We will, I will be coming across the board again in October, September, like we have done in the past couple of years, with water and sewer rates to adjust for inflation of our operation, uh, capital plans, but any ARPA funds that are used for those situations, we would not have to capture in supplemental increases. We could be looking at a 2% as opposed to an 8 or 10%.
Kinda, I'm sorry, this is, I'm sorry, I am confused, and I, I appreciate all the information, but I just wanted to clarify before we get to ARPA, and then I further confuse anybody else. So, in your ARPA request, speaking about well four and well four A, you're, you're asking for $35,000 to fund, um, designs.
Yeah.
That would treat PFAS and organic treatment.
So, does.
Yeah, I'm sorry, so what's the difference between that request for a, a $35,000, which, and then supplement to that, or in addition to that would be, um, $500,000 to actually implement those designs?
So, the $35,000 was an estimate based on our original proposal for full design.
Yes.
That full design has increased by roughly $20,000 for this current design to look at increasing the footprint to allow for a modular system for PFAS in the future. The $500,000 is a rough estimate guess on what the construction would be, walls, roof, windows, piping, whatever needs to be to house said future treatment process.
Okay.
The problem with this is that is conceptual. So, timelines aren't perfect. So, ARPA came in, well, we were already in this process, but so didn't PFAS. So, all of these things dropped. Now, these are not light lifts. PFAS, so the PFAS treatment process isn't as simple as, hey, we have PFAS, this is what we need. We actually need to isolate the specific chemical in the PFAS. So, PFAS is six, uh, separate chemicals classified as PFAS six. The treatment process needs to isolate, so we need to find that specific location and treat that specific PFAS to reduce that. But we also need to onboard four A, because that, what, we have blended well sources. So, raw water comes in and pumps together, blends, changes exactly the treatment process, and then the treatment plant has to adapt to that. So, there is the potential for well four A to actually increase our PFAS levels. That's unknown. This design will help us capture that.
Okay.
Thanks for that question, right? Uh, so we took the vote on that already, so now we'll move on to the sanitary survey inspection. Uh, here, this, part of this just came in yesterday, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I think there was, um, a little bit of clerical on, we, I thought that the sanitary survey was on board docs, and then I provided supplemental material. And actually, I realized that I think we have trouble with Excel files uploading onto board docs, so, so the action plan isn't complete as well, and I printed out an action plan as well.
Oh, it's not, oh.
Yeah, no, it went on, but it, it was, there's two ta, there's, uh, two tabs, B and C, and only C went on, and, um.
All right.
When I checked to print my hard material, I noticed that on board docs, it was only C. But if you want, we can at least talk through the comment portion. That's really, like, the entire report is very cumbersome. Typically, the owner's, um, representative for the water and, um, distribution system and treatment process, um, manages the sanitary survey. That is by charter, the DPW director, um, but also by charter, the board is the water commissioners. So, um, I think this was a good situation. I'm not sure if DPW directors in the past presented this to water and sewer commissioners. So, that was part of our conversation with you guys. It helps holistically draw on some of the conversations we have. I think it's good for, um, the commissioners to understand the processes we go through, why we request certain funding sources, why we're looking at long-term capital, why sometimes we don't have a choice in increasing rates. Sometimes you're forced into it. DEP is forcing us to address, some of this is a couple hundred thousand dollar requests. The lagoon lining, which luckily we're capturing in this new engineering plan, is going to turn into $100, $150,000 extra that wasn't anticipated, and it was not a violation last year. So, you know, sometimes DEP changes their statutes, it, it's not uncommon. We can only predict so much. We have consultants that help us with that, with worlds of experience, and even that. You can only, you know, sometimes these statutes are reactionary in a, in approach, and, uh, the belief with the line lagoon situation is that, uh, DEP is just now reacting to NIPDs, um, which is the protection for water resources, where our line, our unlined lagoon actually has iron and manganese. So, I don't know if you, if anybody's ever walked their dog down by Treatment Plant Four, which is behind Fowler, there is a basin, like an earthen basin down there with rocks in it, and it looks like gold, like iron, iron ore everywhere. That's actually the discharge from what we take out of the water. That's iron and manganese. That's what our ma, our wells mainly remove. And DEP is now feeling that iron and manganese in unlined lagoons are now leaching back into, uh, the aquifers, where prior conceptual ideas was, it was not. So, now we're forced into doing something. Lucky, luckily for us, we captured it in our engineering plan, so those are also unknown costs for ARPA to subsidize as well.
Many of these things that, uh, when I was reading yesterday's, uh, message, uh, it looked like we needed to respond to DEP by Friday, or?
So, I, that, I have.
Is our response all ready to go?
So, you, well, our response, we're having a meeting Thursday. The action plan shows, just for clarity for the, for the commissioners to understand our process, um, this isn't absolute. There is wiggle room. There is negotiation, there is conversations that are had, because these are best practices, these are new statutes, and there is, DEP sometimes does have a realization that there is costs associated, and we don't just have money.
Their preferred mandates versus mandatory mandates.
Yeah. So, as you, as you, if you read through it, we actually have no consent violations, which are definable ones. So, we're in a good place. Last year, we actually had consent violation due to our water tanks. So, this is, it, I know it doesn't look it, but this is actually us improving. Table B deficiencies, they're always, DEP's always gonna find something, they don't, they don't just do, they're working out to. Uh, table B deficiencies, there is a couple of negotiable ones. Um, when they put timeframes on that, that's negotiable. Um, the master plan, that one is going to be a very long conversation between myself and our central rep. I am of the fact that we continue to put money towards planning, which takes away from action. We have plans, whether they believe those are considered master plans or not, the $100,000 master plan they're asking takes away from the $100,000 pipe in the ground, and we have enough information that I believe they need to look back at, and that's the conversation we will have on Thursday. It is not uncommon for me and our rep to communicate in this manner. It's not unprofessional in, in any way, shape, or form. They don't always capture our constraints. They only look at the operation. They don't look at sometimes our bigger picture, which is other constraints. DEP is aware of our water capacity issues. So, when we have a conversation on the master plan, an understanding that those funds will potentially take away from PFAS treatment, or take away from another situation, they will weigh that, and then they will, they will look at it and come back with some comment resolutions. A number of the items on deficiency B, which are highlighted in our action plan, are simplistic, and we can take care of in our FY22 operating budget. Some would be increases to rates that I'm not willing to fold on yet, and one of them is the master plan. We have a master plan, it's just not defined in their, in their terms as a master plan.
So, what I, what I would then say is that, because I, I don't know if the rest of the board, I briefed it, I did not read it in detail. What I would suggest is that the board view that report that came out yesterday with the recommendations and the requests, send you any questions that you may have, and if you can prepare answers and then share them with the entire board when they're ready. I think that's probably the best way to go.
So, I think for, for expedition purposes here, for just to expedite this process, what we could do is you could grant me the authority for sign-off, so we don't have to meet at next meeting, based off of your individual comments, and then as, as a whole, if you feel satisfied, you can, you can allow it.
There's nothing on the agenda to, to give any authority or approve anything, we were just gonna be receiving the reports, so.
We do need to sign off 30 days after receipt, which would be soon, like, within any date now. So, we just have to sign off on receipt. So we just have to sign off on receipt that we received the sanitary survey. It does not lock us in anything, but it does, we have to sign off that we have received it.
Right.
Received the reports.
Yep, and there's a sign off for that.
Okay.
So it sounds like you could do one of two things, Mr. Chair. You could move to approve acknowledgement of receipt of the report from DEP as presented, or you can authorize town administrator or director of public works to, to acknowledge receipt on behalf of this letter.
And I have, I have no problem with either one.
I think the, the second one, I'm in favor of that. I was gonna say, I'm in favor in that.
Yeah, just for, just for speed process and statutory requirements, what we don't want to do is not sign it, and then when I'm negotiating, they're like, wow, you didn't do your portion, and what are you asking?
So you would need a motion from the board as the water commissioners to authorize you to-
Sign as the owner's representative.
Yes, that's my recommendation.
Okay, is there a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to allow the town administrator to receive the sanitary survey inspection report on behalf of the water commissioners. Is that worded appropriately?
That's fine.
Is there a second?
Would you, hold on.
It doesn't matter to me.
It doesn't matter. We just need to make sure that we have, like, when Friday comes, we just need to have it signed and delivered.
Yeah.
It's okay, baby.
Your motion is for Greg to-
That's fine.
Correct.
That's fine.
And then we can follow up with the Excel sheet. What I'll do is I'll, we'll send it out to make sure that you captured the action plan.
Right.
Um, you'll see in the action plan, there's corrective action measures, there's our recommendation, there is even, you know, we're gonna negotiate with DEP, all of those, and then if you have comments, please, questions.
So the motion was made by Jeff, seconded by Justine. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
I will note the comments and the language are much nicer to read than the DEP communications we had about a year and a half ago, which I think speaks to your effort, so I'm not just saying that to point that out.
Absolutely, I was just gonna make the same comment.
No, we're, we're in a good part.
Moving in the right direction, so.
We are in a good part. I will like to highlight a couple of things, just two things if you don't mind. Two concerns that they continually bring up, which are our biggest concerns. Water capacity-
Yep.
-and allowing for increased growth. You know that we contend with that conversation. We contend with the planning board and what, what is an acceptable situation. We will continue to monitor that. DEP does not typically say that in sanitary surveys. We need to keep that in mind. That is an important highlight. If they are concerned with it, we need to be concerned with it, because that means they're looking at, in this survey, they're actually looking at us to become stricter in allowing outdoor usage. They want bylaw changes that, which take the authority out of the water sewer commissioners and put it strictly on a bylaw, which is set in stone forever with reduction in water. We, I, I don't, I, I wanna go back to almost two years ago, and some of you may or may not remember. We cannot reduce our water load from our users any more than we already do. We are well below standards of everything else. We're at a point where we don't have tricks to reduce our water use. We have a water capacity issue. So when they highlight that, they, they understand this as well, as there's only so many tricks of the trade where you can reduce water usage. We now have what is concerning to them as a water capacity issue. So just keep that in mind as growth, and those conversations of growth come across, until we address-
Yeah.
-our water capacity issues.
Justin, is there a growth issue other than capacity? I mean-
From, just strictly the water and sewer standpoint, water capacity is our primary constriction to growth. Sewer is there, but not nearly as, as restricted.
That's why they're recommending we should pursue the long-term plan towards White Pond.
Ah, yes and no. They know that's a pipe dream. So if you notice, they actually go back to our Phase Two, which is Old Marlboro. They know the reality of that, and they also know the permitting process because they're the ones who go through the permitting process. Even if we were to capture 40 million, now, that was 40 million prior to PFAS. That plan is now gonna be 50 million. So it's, White's Pond is going to incrementally increase because PFAS is over violation of White's Pond already. That permitting process is 10 years away. They also see what we see internally is we don't have 10 years to wait. Old Marlboro already has some permitted sites that if we just get the treatment plan online and get that well source online, we're already tapping a straw that's already in the ground. And water quality, they, they've highlighted water quality at Old Marlboro. As you know, we had some DEP correspondence last year regarding water quality at Old Marlboro. As you know, we can't necessarily shut it off, because we have water capacity issues. So if we address water capacity issues, which is four A, will help us supplement using Old Marlboro, and then we address those water capacity, water quality issues at Old Marlboro with our water capacity increase, we're effectively, efficiently reducing costs on the long term to meet our demands and future goals.
Yeah, one of the recommendations, looks like they even say, consider extending seasonal water limits to private wells, which is kind of-
We don't have a lot of private wells. Some of them are blanket statements, as, I don't know if you-
Is that what that is?
When you read the ores comments, those are blanket statements. We don't have a lot of private wells. We have a very reduced amount of private wells. 90% of the residents of Maynard are on our water system and our sewer system. That's also what is discouraging, meaning if we were to fail as a utility, almost every community member of Maynard would feel that. So water quality issues, if we were to fail PFAS, almost every resident in Maynard would see that result, and that cost would, would be burdened by everybody as well. Some of them are blanket statements. Some are just kind of like a reiterated statute.
Touching on White Pond, given the, the known presence of PFAS and firefighting chemicals and the relation of the location of the state firefighting academy to White's Pond, is that a link we can make and is it the town of Maynard's responsibility if?
So, that is what I like to call site zero. That is where it all started, and it wasn't just White's Pond, it was actually Hudson's active well source, which is right there, but it is, White's Pond has been part of that process. That is ground zero. It is where DEP started. It is where DEP did not listen to some of the utilities and when they made such a drastic reduction in the limitations. Hudson was the recipient of a private plating company that had ties to their primary source, which they were able to remediate and sue and get, you know, the bird, the off-cost burden. Hudson now has a secondary source that is in violation, but is not directly tied to that, and now they are eating that cost at a 21% increase in our recent water bill. Just kinda keep that in mind. So what we're trying to avoid is those peaks and valleys, and even this, pre-planning now, ARPA funds are getting ahead of this, will allow us to maybe reduce those 21 spikes that we've been working hard to do over the past couple of years. White's Pond and the cranberry well source of Hudson, DEP was the first on site and they've been handling it since. There is a touchy subject, as the fire academy is a state entity, and remediation and mitigation has not necessarily been there. We have put in for two PFAS grants through DEP, specific to White's Pond, because we knew it was in violation. We were not awarded those grants as White's Pond is an emergency source and not a primary active source. We will continue to focus on any grant funding that DEP and the state start to provide for PFAS, that is increasing. The state, I know Kate Hogan is, is a real advocate for pushing for funding towards PFAS, whether it's through design standards or remediation, but I'm sure as you continue to watch the news, there is a lot of communities that are feeding their customers violations of PFAS. So when you go for grants, we're not there. So I don't count on that money yet, but it doesn't mean we shouldn't be proactive to try to avoid that. We shouldn't wanna rely on grant sources post violation. We want to look at our customers and try to avoid those situations with thorough, efficient methods that we're kinda pursuing now, so.
Thank you.
Alright. We're good. Can I all set?
Yeah.
Alright. Thank you.
Thanks.
Always, interesting discussion.
Always, right?
Always an education.
You know, we're, we're moving on to section 12 here, which is the budget, and what, what I'm going to propose that we do is, there's A, B, C, and D. A being the ARPA that we were just talking about, and then the solar array discussion and the end of year transfers. I'd like to move to do the ones that we're probably gonna have quick discussions on and get those out of the way to leave time to have discussion on ARPA, rather than having the other ones later and then just pushing through without, so if we can, with, if the board agrees, move to the proposed solar array first, and just hear what's going on and what our thoughts are as a board to move that issue forward, and then we'll go to the end of the year transfers, which I know were already approved by FinCom last night, and it's really just for us to approve the next step. And then, then move back to the ARPA discussion, alright? So Greg, why don't we go to the solar array?
For the solar array, this is, although I, I provide direction, but I think it's mostly just to inform the board, unless you tell me to stop doing any of this, which I don't think you will. So, I think a lot of you already know this, but as a refresher, we've been working with Sun Power, who had been the firm that had been awarded the contract, but had not yet been settled or negotiated the contract, to install solar panels in vicinity of the Maynard Public Schools grounds, but it was gonna be a partnership between the select board and the school committee and the community as a whole, working through Justin's office and the superintendent's office for those negotiations and installations. But through community feedback, we learned that the community was greatly opposed to the use of the field that is south of the Green Middle Elementary School. So with that feedback, we went back to Sun Power and said, could you provide us an alternative proposal that did not include the use of that field? They gave us two proposals. One is without the field, and the second one is with, as they said, a portion of the field, but as it turns out, it is a majority of the field.
Yeah.
And, and without the field, it would not be, their, their proposal wouldn't be profitable to their, to the firm. And even, in order to be profitable, they would need to use a significant portion of that field, which, which I knew is kind of a non-starter with the community. So, we said thank you very much to Sun Power, and going through our consultant Beth Greenblatt and primarily through Justin's office, working with her, we moved to this number two proposal, proposer, to the RFU that we released for this project. And, and so, which is Kirsarch, that's the name of the firm. So we're gonna, we're gonna see if we can get an advantageous proposal from Kirsarch. We already had one, but we, we wanna kind of allow them to represent themselves in a way that might be amenable to the community and to the select board and the school committee and whatnot, so that's where we are.
And you're waiting to hear from Kirsarch?
We're waiting to hear from Kirsarch.
We had an advantageous proposal for them that did not involve the field?
No, so the original proposal allowed for field usage. So it was after, so in the original RFUs and the evaluation criteria, allowed for the field usage. It was after, it was after that. In fact, we wrote the letter of award to, to Sun Power with the understanding that they could use the field.
Yes.
And then it was all the public input that we got back, and, and the school committee saying, and I'm not saying there weren't members of this body either that was supposed to use the field, but that, you know, significant impact that said like, well, could you come up with an alternative without using that field?
Bottom line is, we weren't allowed to use the field.
Yeah, that was off the table.
Which is fine, but I guess, I think Jeff's-
So that's, Greg's, I think Jeff's question is the, for the other-
Kirsarch.
Kirsarch that you're dealing with.
They were saying use the field? Yeah, we were saying like, it doesn't involve the field.
But did they have something in their initial proposal that did not include the field?
Yeah, if it is a huge, like, it's just a-
No, that did not include the field. That's my question, did they have, I think that's Jeff's question.
Correct. That is a polite question.
Did they have something in their proposal that did not include the field?
Okay, so then, then my second-
Everybody, everybody used that field.
My, my next question is, why do we think the underlying economics are different enough that we're pursuing a second company?
Yeah, there's the unknown, but there is profit margins for different firms, so.
It's, the firm might be, I'm sorry, Justin.
Nope, that's okay.
You talked a lot, so I'm trying to- No, 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 but because, well, because as I, those are good questions. Will, is there a likelihood that they come back with a dramatically different formula that gives them different profit margins? Probably not, in my opinion, but they may. And if they're gonna do that, it's because they're gonna have to really capitalize on the parking, primarily, the parking, because we already know there's only so much surface area on the roof that's available, and I'm talking about high school.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but what Justin was about to say is that they do use different products. So Sun Power has a proprietary product that they use for their solar, for their parking, parking car, park solar panels, which is that kind of the T shape. Kirsarch doesn't have proprietary, so they might use, they could use Sun Power's, but they, but they will probably use one that maximizes, if they're gonna come back with a proposal at all, they're probably gonna come up with something that really maximizes as much surface area of the parking lot as possible.
It would be aesthetically much different.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, and I just don't want town staff spinning the wheels of the underlying economics are not any difference. That's what I'm-
I think if I understood what Greg was saying, is he was really just reaching out to them, saying, hey, are, is this something that you guys can possibly present to us? And if they say yes, then, okay, we have to look at it. If they say no, well then, it's-
And, and a lot of, and a lot of schools do use the parking, I mean, because if you go to Wayland, for example, that's exactly what they did.
We were going to as well.
Yeah.
But, but Sun Power didn't feel like we were gonna, and we, we were actually, we had good work relationship with Sun Power to, to, and they were very receptive, in my opinion, as to like, adjusting according to what we felt could work, public safety vehicles, aesthetics. I, I felt like they were very receptive, and I, and so I'm, I'm gonna be a little messy, but I don't have, I'm, I'm not expecting Kirsarch to really kind of go at us. I'm expecting Kirsarch to say like, look, if you want us to do it, plug out the blanket to, in order to make up for the-
Yeah, based on the presentation that they made last, last year.
But to your, to your point, I don't wanna spend a lot of his time doing this either, or, or, or the money that we're, that we have to use to pay that Greenblatt, who's wonderful, and I, and I hope to use her in the future, but I, so we're, that, that has been our intention, like, we're, we've heard loud and clear from the community, like, what, what's their red flags and what isn't, and so I think it'll be a quick conversation with Kirsarch, and we're not gonna drag this out.
Okay.
Okay, good. So we're on the same page on that, where, and I agree with you, that you don't wanna spend their time if there's not a profitable proposal that's coming through. It's, and they'll let us know pretty quickly and we'll say thank you very much, and that'll be it.
And I did share this with a bunch of subcommittees, so the school committee, as due liaisons has been aware, but admittedly, I've not presented this to the school committee, because there's not much to present, except that we're not using Sun Power.
Right. Alright, budget transfers.
So, most municipalities, I imagine probably all municipalities, I can see Lori's on the student account, most municipalities do an end of year budget transfers, just through the unforeseen, unknown circumstances throughout the year. Some accounts are used more than others, sometimes they might be surplus in certain accounts, and that allows you to, with a certain amount of flexibility, legal flexibility, you can transfer between budgets. It happens every year. And so Lori and I are, are presenting to the select board, as we did last night for the finance committee, our recommendations for transfers between accounts. There's kinda like the, the saving grace, if you will, for FY21 was the health insurance. So our health insurance, which we, and my recommendation is why, why the town did it, over budgeted for health insurance, and that really allowed us, that and a little bit of snow and ice that we ended up using, allowed us to cover a lot of these expenses. As you can see, a lot of these expenses are minor. As per any year, you can never really know what's gonna come up throughout the course of the year, especially in this last, this last fiscal year, which, you know, one thing maybe to highlight is even unemployment insurance. So, we, I didn't let anyone go on the town side, but, you know, we are identifying whether this unemployment insurance, which we do have to pay, like, that has been, we did validate that, but the schools let go the Excel program, which is the after-school program, so we, we think that that's, we know that we were gonna be on hold for a certain amount of coverage for those benefits, unemployment specifically, so we think that might be for that. If that is verified, that those, that those Excel, that we're paying that unemployment because we let go of Excel, because Excel was closed because of COVID, then we're gonna see if we can apply those expenses to care, so that we can cover it in this case. But we still have to pay the bill. So, I'm looking for there's any other highlights, but maybe I will. So you have any questions, Lori and I can answer those questions. As I said, finance committee, you approved this last night, they asked a couple of questions. So if you have any questions, or if anything else, myself or Lori, or even Megan, we're here to answer.
Any questions, Ryan? No?
Actually, I have to say that I'm pretty impressed that, you know, in the year of COVID, that we only had this many transfers.
Yes.
So we appreciate everything, the hard work everyone's done.
I, well, I mean, I really wanna, she's a little, one of the titles on the screen, but Lori, Lori's only been here for like, half a heartbeat, and she put this together pretty well, and I appreciate it. So good job, Lori.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
There you go. Right, so, this is good, and, and so we'll be, we'll be able to, this is kinda like one of the final, there's a couple of the last steps, we're transitioning to that by 22 now, so this, it's a little long way for that.
Okay. So now we'll skip back up to A.
Do we have to approve?
Oh, we have to approve the transfer, sorry.
I'll move to approve the end-of-the-year budget transfers for fiscal year 2021 as presented.
Second?
Moving second, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move back up.
What about the tri-board meeting?
We'll do that after we do the AARP.
AARP?
Same letters, different.
No, no comment.
Hey. So, okay, Greg, why don't you summarize where we're at, how we got here, and then we'll have a discussion as a board as to what our thoughts are.
So the American Rescue Plan Act is a federal program that follows the CARES funding scheme, but not entirely the same. So CARES was mitigation and responsiveness to the ongoing pandemic and has affected the communities, and you would pay for the response efforts for that. The American Rescue Plan Act is supposed to be a follow-up to that, although you can use those funds for similar circum, similar circumstances and expenses if you need, if you're continuing to pay for responsive actions to COVID-19. But the American Rescue Plan Act is also meant for, turning the chapter, turning the next page, and then investment into the infrastructure primarily, but as you can see, there's a couple of other circumstances or justifications that you can use the American Rescue Plan Act. Another significant difference between ARPA and CARES is the agencies that are supervising or administering this. CARES was heavily administered by A and F, the Administration of Finance and Department of Government for the state, as opposed to ARPA. ARPA is really straight from the federal government, somewhat through the state government, and then directly to municipalities, instead of really, I, we didn't have much interaction with the federal government, when, you know, federal agencies for CARES, we went mostly through A and F and DOR. But for whatever reason, ARPA comes mostly from the federal straight to the municipalities, with a little bit of translation and guidance from DOR and A and F. So, I reached out to the departments, and I asked if you had any budget requests, you know, propose a similar that they would for a capital request. And so I collected those requests, and I put them onto a spreadsheet, which you can see. As I said, infrastructure is, is the primary name of the game, so that's mostly Justin's field, and, and that's why I was trying to get clarification as to what his plans may be for ARPA, to distinguish those plans from what he's, what he just presented to you this evening. But it's, it's the same story, as we're trying to expand our water capacity for the town, so that, ARPA could go a long ways towards that. And it's been said earlier, I think even Jeff mentioned it, maybe during the budget subcommittee, otherwise, that any amount of money that we get from ARPA towards those needs would just be less money that we're gonna have to ask the ratepayers. So that's a good trade-off. The other request that I had was from the School Department, and that was to cover the benefits for employees that the school would like to hire to transition back to full-time, in-person curriculum for, at least for three years, for FY22, 23, and 24. So their, their pitch is that typically the, the School Department's budget covers the salaries, and then the, the general fund, which is both town and schools, covers the benefits for all employees, and that includes the schools. So they, their proposal is to, their request is to use ARPA, which again is for general purposes, to use the ARPA funds to cover the benefits of employees that they would like to hire on a term basis, as they say, which is not meant for full-time, but as a term, and apparently for a max of three years, for employees to help with this transition team. And they wanna pay for those salaries, not from the general fund, because that's already been appropriated in town meeting, but through the third round of this ESRS funding source, which is another federal program. So you have CARES, ARPA, and ESRS. So schools wants to use ESRS to pay for the salaries, and they wanna use ARPA money to pay for those benefits. And I, and you can see I, I captured those requests in the, in the amount of money per year and put them on the spreadsheet. The town is, is reportedly getting $3.3 million of ARPA funds. The school is requesting a total for, over the course of the three years, $928,000. And for Justin's request, he was, I only got the two departments, School Department and DPW. So for the DPW requests, it was, just as Justin was saying, it's Phase 1, which is the expansion and kinda the sophistication of Plant 4 for Well 4 and Well 4A, and then moving into Phase 2, which is Old Marlboro Treatment. So it's just, just kinda supplements his plans. So what I'm looking for the board is not necessarily anything to sign, but I am looking for guidance. If you don't like this plan as I'm presenting, that feedback would be helpful to me. That way it can help, I can, I can work with the departments, primarily the School Department. Although admittedly, the School Department wanted to hire now, if not already, so that they could be prepared for the following year. But we, we haven't even gotten our full amount of funding for ARPA. ARPA has a coverage period up until 2024, so it, it's, it's difficult to gauge what the urgency is. I, I suspect the view, the Select Board is not gonna tell me not to spend money on infrastructure. So I think, I think Justin and I are gonna, are gonna continue to pursue these contracts with our design teams just in the, in the regular course, as we normally would, but with a certain amount of like confidence, knowing we have money available. So I think the, the true question is maybe how do you feel about the School Department, which I know is a weighty, a weighty question. But how do you feel about the School Department's request? This was presented at the Budget Subcommittee. I thought it was well received. But yeah, that's, that's where we are.
Yeah. Thanks for the summary, Greg, and I will throw it open to the members for comments and thoughts.
Well, initially, I was a little, obviously, the schools are always gonna be asking for the moon, so that's the way they always operate, so that, and I give them a lot of credit for saying, you know, you've gotta start someplace, might as well start. And, and I'm, I'm, you know, glad to hear that at the subcommittee meeting, I guess there was some kind of a consensus, and you feel comfortable with the $928,000 request from the school? Oh, okay. So, I mean, I just,
I mean, that's a third of the-
Exactly, that's the way I'm looking at it, you know, and I'm saying that, so that takes away from us of what we wanna do with the infrastructure, which I think is crucial to us. And I understand their concern about what they have, but they're always, from my perspective, they're always looking to find a way to, you know, get money from somewhere else where they don't have to use their own budgets, you know, so.
I would say at the Budget Subcommittee, there was great appreciation for the presentation and the desire of the schools and what they had presented. There was some discussion about the legality, quote-unquote, not being anything underhanded, or the legality of being able to use these funds in the meth, in the way that they had requested. We got pretty much clarity that it's, it's, it's proper use of the funding should we decide to spend it in that way. And, and then there was some discussion, and Jeff was very vocal about his concern about the burden on ratepayers versus the, you know, the operational budget and/or additional ESR funds or other avenues of collection. And that might not have come from Jeff directly, but from others on the committee.
I, I have, so my one question, so yeah, I shook my head bigger, so, but, but one of the things that I noticed is with this proposal what the schools wanna do, I, you know, I commend them for wanting to, to help recover from COVID, obviously. And I think what happened was kind of a, you know, everybody's new, so I think that no one really realized when building the budget for this particular thing, that there needed to be a conversation between the schools and the town regarding the fact that employee benefits was gonna be something that we haven't budgeted for. So, I see in there, so there's, it's a little conflicting, but one of the, the seven-page paper that they gave was, was 10 FTEs. The one that they proposed, the official report was for 13 FTEs. For 10 FTEs, that's gonna be about $320,000 for FY22. So I feel like I would be comfortable understanding the fact that this was something that was unexpected, was unanticipated, it wasn't something we knew when, that anyone was building the budget. We could give, we could support that, you know, 10 FTEs worth of budget, of, of benefits. And then dedicate the rest of it to water and sewer infrastructure, as we've been hearing tonight is kind of what we need. Cause I just feel like it's one, and it's also one of those things that I, I do still think, I was reading an email earlier, you know, that Greg has been doing his due diligence, trying to find out whether or not things are covered or, or whatnot, and I know one of the conversations that happened was, you know, trying to figure out whether or not we can use it for benefits.
Right.
And, you know, one of the comments is that there is still, you know, a comment period as far as, for treasury guidance. So I still feel like some of this is still unknown, so we don't need to figure out tonight what particular projects we're gonna fund for water and sewer, but at the same time, the schools need to know, the schools need to know at least for FY22, that they can move forward with what they're doing. But I would think we could say that without committing to FY23 and FY24 for what they, and then we can work with the budgeting from that.
That's a good idea. I like that idea.
I'm a little lost on what you're suggesting we take an action on right now in that case, cause I think the one thing that I, I'm not quite sure I agree with Greg on is that there wasn't urgency from the school side, not on the, you know, the, getting the money from the federal side to understand what, what the final amount would be so that they can make the actual hires. So, can you clarify what you're suggesting, Justine?
So, well, because I think that, and again, I, you know, I'm kinda taking the, the seven-page document that they had. And so they have, you know, a four-year, a three-year plan with that.
Yes.
FY22, 23, 24. I don't mind supporting FY22's plan with the $300,000 or $320,000 or around, whatever, and then-
But they're requesting 416 here, is what he's-
Well, right, and that's, so I'm not quite sure why, what the, like I said, that's a difference of three FTEs, so that was between one-
Oh, I see.
So I'm not really sure why, but that's, and again, that it might have just changed, but, but that way, they would have a year to figure out, again, whether or not they're gonna need it for next year, because this is the initial year, this is the initial push of the program of trying to figure out, you know, we don't know where the students are gonna be, they don't know where the students are gonna be going back in September, and then how they're gonna recover through the year. It could be at the end of the year, they're not going to need-
So you're saying, taking this and breaking it up into a-
Just do one year, one year at a time, yeah.
I'm proposing that we use, we, we use just the $300,000, and we use it at the front end. And then, we dedicate the rest of the money to water and sewers.
Uh, so-
So $3 million for town water and sewer, and then $300,000 for schools.
Okay, in that case, the schools would hire fewer of this kind of surge staff to make up for the deficits in learning due to COVID. So I think that is the anticipated response that we would expect from the schools. So I, I'm not saying that's a good or bad, that's a-
Would they just hire them with more uncertainty for the employee?
My understanding from the Budget Subcommittee meeting when we posed that question is they would hire fewer. They would reduce the scale of the program over the three years. So I just wanna be conscious in, in the decision that we're making by doing that.
I'm wondering if, is the superintendent online tonight?
I doubt it.
No?
No.
Like, all I can see is three, three names, so.
I didn't ask him to come this morning.
I mean, I'm, I kinda like Justine's proposal. It's gonna give them an opportunity to see whether or not, I mean, what happens if, we, we give them the blank, you know, what do you call, a paper to say, oh, go ahead and, you know, plan for 23 and 24, and what happens if they don't really need that money?
Well, I think, I mean, and that's the thing, is I think that everybody, I mean, if we got that money, we would use it. If they got that money, they would use it.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Because we're all gonna use, because we all, everyone needs it.
Right. But to your point, the priority is, is very, you know, clear to us of what's going on with the infrastructure. And I think it's important if we could have the opportunity to use that money, apply it towards the need for the improvement on the infrastructure.
There's, there's, they're, they're both opportunities for spending that are productive. I don't, well, okay, I just wanna-
No, I agree.
Yeah, I think that's Jeff's, Jeff's point is absolutely correct, in that, you know, to suggest that-
One is more important than the other.
No.
No, I don't, you know, I, I hope-
They've made a very compelling presentation as to, you know, their need.
But I, lesser, I'm agreeing with Justine's approach. We're not saying no, we're just saying-
You're, you're cutting down from 900 to $300,000 of their request is what you're suggesting.
Cutting, right, I'm, I'm cutting down to 300 from 90, yeah.
Or whatever the particular, I think it was a little over.
And do they have other, you know, this came up at the Budget Subcommittee, I don't know if we had the full answer, the ESR funds that they have access to?
Yeah.
This, this utilizes, that they, I believe, with their proposal, they have utilized all of their ESRS in addition to the additional $900,000 they wanna use. So Maynard gets for ESRS, ESR 1 was $143,374, ESR 2 is $504,851, ESR 3 is 1.154 million. And, that's for ESR 3, sorry. So I believe that they have added all of that together to put the program together, but then didn't realize, and again, and we didn't budget for it, so that's the other part of it, is that maybe next year we can budget for, so their numbers will reduce a little bit, because they are not going to hire, so it looks like in FY23, they're looking at six FTEs. So we can look at, when we put our budget together for employee benefits, adding a couple of FTEs, that comes out of general operating budget anyways. So I'm not saying that they're not gonna be able to do the program, but I'm just saying there might be a different way to fund it.
Wow. I, I think, I think you're, I think there's a, there's a, one level of the program they can do if they get the $900,000. There's a lesser level of the program they can do if they get the $300,000. So I think we, we just, we're,
Yeah.
that's, that's a choice we're making right now, and I just, I don't wanna sugarcoat it, saying that we'll cut them down to $300,000, and hopefully they can find a way to fund the rest of it later. I don't feel that's appropriate. I, I, I get it, but I, I think if we wanna make the stand and say this is what we need for water and sewer, because our infrastructure needs are so critical, and we wanna avoid that X rate increase on the ratepayer, that's a, that's a valid reason to compare. I'm not sure that I agree that cutting it down to $300,000 is tough for me. I, I think the program they have is, there, there is a major need in, in the learning and the education from COVID, that is a deficit that is a need, so I just wanna make sure if we're doing it, we're doing it consciously, and not saying that they're gonna be able to find some funding down the road.
I, I believe that we should dedicate as much money as possible to water, so that's what I was saying.
And that's a very valid point, given that what we just heard.
So where would the board be leaning?
What are you proposing, Jeff?
Jeff?
I-
Go ahead.
I'm, I would be, I would be okay if the rest of the board would be with the full proposal that the School Committee has put forward for the $900,000 number, but it doesn't seem we're at that point right now. That's higher than I might have put initially, but I thought that their presentation and the explanation of needs was there. And I, so I do think it is a real need. So to me, it's, it's that, that money will eventually be translated into, we still need that water and sewer infrastructure. So it is a higher rate on the water users is where that would, you know, translate to, that we'll have to make up at some point. I think education is a very strong value that, that the community wants. They also want clean water, but we'll be giving them clean water regardless. So I, I would be okay with the $900,000, but I would, I would suggest perhaps there is a middle value that we could give them, so they don't have to cut the program back so far.
Okay, so then it's not 900, what would that be then?
What's that?
You think there's a compromise value in there?
Well, we could decide to give them $300,000 right now and just go ahead with that, if we wanted to. I mean, there's, we're, if that's what we're comfortable with. So I just wanna make sure we're mapping it out and making it a conscious decision.
So.
So what was the consensus out there? Cause I couldn't-
I, I'm not sure if there was a consensus. I think what they had asked is, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong. There was an understanding of where they're coming from. They asked if we thought the board would approve the proposal that Greg has put in front of us tonight. We said, don't make any hiring decisions based on that. We can't speak for the full board. That's where we left the conversation.
So I'm not even sure if they started hiring. I just came in there with myself and asked the superintendent.
I didn't see any, I didn't see any of the, they're, they're hiring physicians, but not those ones yet. I didn't see anything advertised yet.
And I, I don't know if there's anyone from the schools that could, that could comment on this that is listening in on the meetings. I can't see-
Doesn't seem like it.
Participating, so.
No, there's not that many folks on it.
No school committee members?
No.
Uh, nope.
And I wouldn't wanna put them on the spot regardless. You know, my, my big concern is that, And I wouldn't want to put them on the spot regardless. Um, you know, my, my big concern is that, um, is, I want to support the school's proposal, but what I don't want to have a situation where the schools then come back looking for additional funding for other programs and whatever, that put a further burden on taxpayer, let alone the ratepayer that we're going to have for, for the DPW. So I'm hoping that there's some way, I don't know, if, you know, if it's possible, but some way that we can get a, a commitment that we're giving, we're giving this, these funds for these programs with the agreement that there's not going to be a pull for a, for a large amount of money, uh, next year for additional program.
I, I get that. I feel, I feel that's along the lines of the commitment they were asking for, for the separate account for the solar panels, and I think both ways, I don't like either of them. I think they're kind of a bad faith approach to, to defending a pile of money when we should really be looking at this holistically, that this is a, a, a full community. And so I don't want to engage in that. I think the way we, we, we need to push back when they make certain arguments about the raising and cutting of funds, so that in three years, this is not a cut, this is, you know, money that was only, that's non, right, so I think that's.
Other way.
Yeah.
That's, that's one way to look at that.
It all depends on how you look at it.
So I, you know, I, you know, I think nine hundred thousand dollars is a bit uncomfortable in the higher range. I wouldn't want to, I certainly wouldn't want to go below the, you know, three hundred and change there. That would be my kind of floor of what I would be comfortable with, but there's, there's the range of.
That's what I was getting at, use that as a range, is there a compromise number that you're.
If, if we were to give them somewhere in between, I, they would readjust, I'm sure that they would readjust the plan accordingly. They wouldn't get the full amount that they're looking for, um, and it wouldn't cut it off from that plan as much. So I think every, every dollar that we give them, they could use productively. Every dollar we keep, we can use productively.
So what about four hundred and fifty thousand, which is half of?
Which is what I, that's why I asked, what were you proposing, so.
The other, and.
Your numbers in between.
The other point would be, are we getting ourselves to where, and I'm sure Justin's sitting over here looking the other way, that, uh, if we, you know, four hundred and fifty thousand would give up, would give up, the ratepayers would save four hundred and fifty thousand, um, going forward, would that be a significant amount?
Yeah.
I'm not looking for, I'm not looking for you.
I can give you some context if you just want.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just, the best way to describe our, our rate percentage increase is every hundred thousand dollars on our water enterprise is roughly two percent. So think of that in terms like technically, that's kind of where we're at with our rates. So like sewer, if we had a hundred thousand dollar line.
Two percent over the current rate.
Yeah, two percent over, okay, you're rough.
So if we save.
Would that be one percent then? I mean, if we save four hun-
Four hundred, if we saved four hundred thousand dollars, that would be eight percent.
Yes.
Ah, divest quickly.
Yeah.
Eight percent water increase.
Right, as opposed to an eight percent water increase.
Yeah, right, it would offset the, the need for an eight percent increase.
Which wouldn't necessarily come in one year, or would it?
Correct, it wouldn't necessarily.
So it would be, it would be spread out, but the point, the point stands, it's.
Right.
So four fifty, is that what we're hearing, or?
I'm, I'm certainly willing to compromise on it, I just don't know how the, what the impact would be on the schools, uh.
That, we, we already know that at nine hundred thousand dollars, they can hire a certain amount of staff that they'll have to make a significant, but not a total cut at, down to three hundred thousand dollars. So we, we save them from ma, having to make.
I, I would, I would prefer a compromise somewhere in the middle than, than a, uh, than a cut to three hundred.
Cut all the way down to the three hundred, yeah, correct.
Right, and I would not, I would not want to do that given their presentation, what I saw, I think there's a need, and, and I think it's legit. I also hear Justine's argument.
So you're recommending four fifty for the twenty twenty-two?
Well, four fifty period, I think, right?
Or four fifty, all together?
That's what you were proposing.
Well, I think that's what.
That's what I'm suggesting, just letting you know, is that a fair number that Jeff can get on board with?
I can get on board with that, yes. And not, and just to be, I know I'm, we're beating a dead horse, but n- not for twenty-three, not for twenty-four, just.
Just, well, they asked for nine twenty-eight over the three years.
Right.
So we're saying four fifty over the three, like, four fifty.
I'm tracking, okay, all right. Armand, where are you? Cause I don't think we've.
I'm, I'm, I'm good at that.
I mean, I, I'm.
I think that's a good compromise, in my opinion.
There's, we're never going to be completely comfortable with this question.
Of course, of course not, but I think it's a compromise.
So we have a select board meeting next week, so tomorrow.
We do.
Definitely.
No, no, tomorrow, I'm going to ask the superintendent what he thinks, and then, if he's in, I, you know, whatever, but I'll ask somebody over there, and, uh, I'll let you. I think that's good to get feedback from them.
Yes.
Before we make a final decision on that. Right, cause I'm not signing anything.
At least now, there's an, an indication to them as to where the board is leaning.
Yeah.
And they can then make their pitch to the entire board.
We'll have Chris with us next week.
Chris will be here.
The catch is, I don't know when the school committee meets. I don't think they're that active, they're, I, I, my, if I recall, they're not that active, but at the same time, so.
They're not.
So if, uh, si, if I was superintendent, and I was told, come up with a different plan, whatever it may be, I would say, great, well, whatever I tell you, I'm not telling my bosses. So, you know, like, I, I think he or she or whoever from the superintendent's office will tell me what they think of it, but it won't necessarily be like a stamp approved plan by the school committee. So it just sounds like a, as a caveat. Yeah.
Okay.
But he's still, we'll get him out, I'm sure he will be glad to tell me what he thinks about it.
Sure. So we'll probably have it again on our agenda next week.
I can do it.
All right.
Whatever response I get, yeah.
And I'm sure there's all, that also gives time for people to make comments.
That's true.
And I'm sure you'll get them.
That's true.
I'm sure we'll hear from them, and that's fine.
Yeah, which is good.
Like I said, the, both uses of the money are.
Yeah, I totally agree.
Big needs, so.
Actually, maybe you can clarify also, because that's, that's the thing, Greg, is, like I said, their, their proposal included in their letter was ten FTEs.
Yeah, okay.
And the one in the request form was thirteen, so that's, we'll have time to clarify that one too.
Okay, great.
All right. Fair enough. We need to move on to the tri-board meeting planning. Uh, there's a proposed date that Greg has given us. Was this just a date that you looked at the calendar and said?
Yeah, it looks. And, and with my team. So like, uh, Lori and Jen, Jen launched the treasure collector, and, um, Angie, the assessor, because we're, we were just kind of lining it up as the development of the, of the budget, um, tax rate hearing, uh, you know, this, as, as she'll, by this point, will, she will be done with submitting, um, the end of the year budgets to department revenue and get certica, certifications back, so end of September was the.
That's Thursday night.
Yeah.
I, I have it on my calendar already, after seeing.
Thursday, the what?
The twenty-ninth of September. I put it on my calendar after seeing it on the agenda, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to be here.
You're not?
Okay.
Okay, then we don't want to have it that date.
Well, you guys could have it around me if you want. Oh, wait a minute.
Twenty-ninth of September.
No, no, yeah, I'll be gone twenty-fifth through the second, yeah, I'm not here on twenty.
You're not here.
So, uh, yeah, so we could maybe, I could look in October. If you, if it, if that's a deal breaker.
Or the previous week, the twenty-second?
Possibly.
We have a board meeting the night before. Well, one thing that we would have to do is sort of make sure that everybody's in agreement that there's a set time limit on this meeting.
Mm-hmm.
What, just, what is the exact purpose of the meeting? I'm not, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but I just want to make sure.
That's a good point. Uh, I'll kind of just refer, I understood that in the past, the, the communities, and not just this body, but the finance committee as well, and the school committee, have, have said, and maybe you haven't been present for some of those, because we don't do them that often, but they're, it's been well received, like, people said, like, they really appreciate you doing this opportunity.
Yeah, we should do more often, yep.
And it came up at the gold setting meeting, about Paul, and so, um, like anything else, if you don't put it on the agenda, you don't do it, so I, I figure I'd go out and.
Well, I think Jeff's question is, what's the purpose? I think it's important.
Oh, sorry.
Well, if nothing else, we're, we've got two new members of the school committee, we've got three new members of the finance committee.
Let me, let me, let me rephrase it. What distinguishes this meeting from the February meeting that is?
The, the budget, that's a budget.
A budget.
Right, so this is, is this explicitly non, is this explicitly non-budgetary, or?
This is, this is overall. We try to keep it non-budgetary, but it starts going to that a lot of times.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, that's what we do.
Vision about what, you know, as a community, what, what, you know.
Okay, okay.
What should be our focus, what should be our priorities, what should be, where should we direct ourselves?
So around that period of time, it's also when I present a, a recommended budget message for the select board to provide to departments and committees. Um, but you also see in my public comment notes, I, I thought it might be good, based on actually on your suggestions to implement, um, the, to tie in the master plan implementation committee more often.
Mm-hmm.
And so we did reach out to Jason Creel to see if he would be interested in, in asking the implementation committee to present.
Actually, actually, that's a great idea.
So that, because often, I mean, Bob McCarthy and Julian Pennergrass did a great job of kind of giving themselves a goal for.
Right.
And I, that's always good for any meeting, just to have something to talk about. So, um, uh, I thought the, I thought that might be good. We're still going to look at the details with Jason, just see, and, and the implementation committee, which now some of you are, may as well do. So, um, just to kind of figure out like what that could, what that could look like, and that, but, so it's kind of long-range planning, plus it's like short-term, because we're going to talk about the budget development. Everything's budget-related, as, as much as, I mean, that's from my perspective, like, you can't help it.
Yep. Well, it's, it's budget-related, you know, ultimately, but initially, it's about talking about the big picture, about the town.
Absolutely.
What, 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 what direction we're going as a town, and what we need to do to get there. Yeah, budget is part of it, but.
And part of it is team building.
Team building, absolutely. It's, interacting with each other is important, in my opinion.
It's as simple as that.
Yeah.
So that, that's a, that's a big part of it too.
So, that, and I think that's probably the key, is team building more so, given, as I mentioned, that we've got two new members of the school committee, a large number, I think of three new members of the finance committee.
Mm-hmm.
And we should give them an opportunity to get to know who we are, we get to know who they are, and we at least.
And I like the idea about inviting Jason to do a presentation or update of what's going on in the implementation.
Yeah, well, right, and then, um, I can't remember which body had asked the master plan implementation committee, probably it was finance, to ask him to, um, if there was any budget recommendations from the master plan, like, if there's any sort of guidance or input from the master plan.
Okay.
I'm just saying, so this, this is what they, the master plan implementation committee was asked to consider, if there is any uh, influence on budget planning that they could give. So, I don't know.
You mean finance asked about master, or master?
No, that, the, the master plan implementation committee asked how they can be helpful in budget development.
Oh, okay.
They're kind of reviewing the priorities, you know, through the different committees, and, you know, a lot of, the members are doing great work, and they are like, how can we fit into the town's budget and cycle, and how, when's a good time to advocate, and, you know, how can we get in early? And so they have started their work. Um, they know that a lot of this stuff gets started in the fall, so we're, there, we have a strategy call with Jason next week to see, you know, how far we'll be in the fall, and how we can kind of connect these conversations.
Oh, I thought, I thought that was a vacation, so don't.
Well, he's, Jason's doing a great job of, you know, leading that.
Right, and.
Yeah.
So, getting to the issue of the, of the time, um, we could be here the twenty-second, but not work with your staff, Greg.
Yeah. Well, he's going to have to check with the staff, I guess.
I will, September twenty-second, I'll just have to see you.
And we can just clarify next week.
Okay. And then, um, I did ask, I don't know how y'all feel about, I know this body, you like to do in-person, but finance committee likes to do remote. So how do you feel about in-person, remote, or hybrid fees?
If it was hybrid, it would have to be here, because they're set up for it, I guess downstairs too.
The tri-board?
Tri-board.
Yeah.
Downstairs could do, and it's big. We did a tri-board downstairs one time.
Yeah, we did, um.
It's not going to have the same effect.
I mean, the finance committee doesn't want to be.
They don't want to be in person, in person.
Probably.
In person.
So, um, right, so you can catch and chew on it, but that, right now, that's kind of like the big, big challenges is how to do it.
Uh, you know, this room or downstairs, because they're set up downstairs, I've watched, uh.
Mm-hmm.
Doing it right now.
They only have one.
Yeah, they're doing it right now.
They might only have one camera though, but, um.
They only have one camera.
Yeah, so this room probably makes the most sense.
Yeah, okay, good. And we'll, I'll see what, how we can, might be able to arrange this, so Megan and I can put her.
Well, you could always put the desks in the middle like you do with EDC or whatever.
Yep. Yep. But certainly then, some people might, like the finance committee, they may not want to attend in person. I'm not, I don't know, I know I'm speaking for them, but.
Yeah, we don't have to sit here, I mean, we sit down over there if we have.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, can, we're getting creative with layouts these days, so.
That's true.
All right, so we'll hear more about that again next week.
That was good, that's, I appreciate that guidance, that's what I needed, yeah.
All right, um, municipality statement of commitment, uh, Metro West Shared Public Health Services. Is that Megan that you want to talk about this?
Yep, and we have, um, Kathy McMillan, who's the chair of the public, uh, the Board of Health on as well, but the, um, outline of this is that we have partnered with Hudson, Natick, Framingham, Hopkinton, Millis, Ashland, and Milford. And this is the state's way of recognizing that some of our health departments did not have all the support that we needed during this recent pandemic, so they have put some money to regional grants to assist in filling in the gaps and trying to support, um, local health departments, basically. And this is not to replace any staff, but it is to supplement. So they're going to hire a few people, and there'll be, you know, some inspectors, um, nurses, so that if, you know, a health agent or inspector is unavailable, um, it's not, oh, you have to wait two weeks, you know, it's, here's someone who can fill in. Um, so we have been, we're really excited to, you know, kind of be asked to participate. We did get this grant. Um, you know, we have been speaking with the Board of Health about this, they're excited to kind of boost up our capacity as well. Um, and this is just to, and the Board of Health has been discussing this, as we've been kind of applying for it over the past few months. But this is a, this is an op, opportunity to, you know, sign off and say, yes, we support, we support this effort, and we want to regionalize with these communities to, uh, at no cost to us, but to get additional support through this state program.
And it sounds to me like it's a great program. I'm, I, I was intrigued by the, uh, the communities that were involved, they're kind of diverse, you know, as far as where they are in the state, but I think it works.
Is there a reason behind that?
Um, I think it started off probably closer to home, but these are the ones that, you know, honestly, we were invited by Hudson, and I just said yes, and, and then others got included, so.
Okay.
I think there's a lot to learn, you know, I've been on some calls, and there's a lot to learn from these different communities. They have different levels of staffing, they have different levels of expertise, so, you know, I even just, you know, an initial call the other day about some of the different software they use, and how a lot of them use the same software, we don't use any software for some inspections, so it would be an opportunity through this grant to get the same software everybody else uses, so we can, you know, just kind of share resources and be on the same page.
Seems to me to be, uh, something that.
And like, so Kathy's on as well.
Pretty easy decision for me, it's relative to, so, any, uh.
Comments from the board? Nope.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll move to sign the municipality statement of commitment form for the Metro West Shared Public Health Services Collaborative as presented.
There a second?
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, art space. Um, I'm wondering if we should put this off again, and the reason I say that is, um, I'm not certain if we have, do we have tonight the updated lease that has the, the, any new language in it, or is this, is this something pressing, or should we?
No, I haven't, I. It's not pressing, um, because, no, it's not pressing.
Or is there going to be something else incorporated in the new, in the lease, is that what we're saying?
So.
Well, no, if you read the, if you look at the lease that was presented to us.
Well, that's the old lease.
Yes, and it talks about the managed school committee as being an agree, one of the.
Right, that's, that's the old lease, that's what I mean, okay, so, so you have to mix it.
So, and there is, we believe that there is an updated version that has the correct language in it and everything else.
Or an end-to-end amendment, whichever that, that clarifies that it's the select board's authority, not, not the school committee's anymore. I mean, it's a town-owned building. So, um, yeah, I remember the Coolers School had the same thing. I just have, I'll find, I've, I think I've seen that document, I'm going to look for it, and I'll, I'll provide it to the board.
What, um, I think the, the issue that I'd like to hear from, uh, from them on is the status of their, um, renovations, and making sure that they're in line with the town is fully aware of what's going on in there. You know, we went in for that tour, and we saw that the ceilings are pulled down, and I don't know if permits were pulled, that type of thing.
Yeah, from what I understand, I think Justin could bring us up to speak. Cause you guys visited, you and Wayne visited the place, is that true?
Uh, yes and no.
Oh, okay.
So myself and Greg had a visit, um, several months before your recent tour. We are aware, um, at some of the situation going, going on, but not everything needed, um, an official permit, which is through Megan's office and OMS and RTRDASM, I was the building commissioner. But I do believe, Greg, they did, um, after our communication, um, Jerry Beck did reach out and give us a blanket statement of what the overall goal was, um, and I have not been there since.
What's the latest we have on art space meeting, with building permits?
So they had permits to start some, a construction project, but I believe the contractor, um. So they had permits to start some, a construction project, but I believe the contractor, um, they pulled out or something like that, and so the, the project stopped. And so, the, the work had stopped. So there's, I don't think there's a permit right now for any additional work, cause I don't think they have kind of applied for another one.
So, we, you know, we're the landlords of the building, and it's got ceilings torn down and walls torn down.
Sure.
And everything else, and we need to make sure that this is, there's a commitment to fix and repair and bring it back up to, to standard. Uh, and if we're gonna be negotiating on a lease, we wanna make sure that we're not putting ourselves as a community in a bad spot.
Yeah.
That's where, sort of where I'm coming from. Um, and then I see, you know, s, uh, some of the things, and this might be fixed in some of the other parts of the, uh, of the lease. But, uh, comments about the outside area, I think that now is the, uh, butterfly place, uh, I think it's in the lease, that that's owned by the town, but it seems like, uh, art space has taken over that.
I was gonna say, they renamed it and everything, so I wasn't sure how that.
Don't want the middle?
I can answer, I can actually answer that one. Um, so this was, uh, Greg's predecessor, Andrew, had an agreement with, uh, a local community advocacy group that started the Bee Ha, uh, the Bee Meadow.
Yeah, Bee Hive, yeah, Bee, Bee Nut, yeah.
Bee Meadow. So technically, um.
I said butterfly.
But the Board of Selectment at the time granted the authority to allow that use for that, um, specific situation. That's currently still technically ours as the communities, and the granting of use is actually that com, that committee, which has kind of transformed from the original committee. But what they still are technically like the Beehive, Bee Meadow Committee. Uh, myself and Caitlin Young met with them, um, two months ago, I believe, um, to discuss options for, um, enhancement that they were looking for. And we guided them to, um, several local grant processes like B, CPC, et cetera. I do know that that committee has tried to bridge and partner with art space to kind of enhance that location, which might look like art space is taking over, but it is not. It's still technically the original committee that is transformed, so. So if we want to continue to allow, uh, the Bee Meadow Garden Club to utilize that space, we might want to keep it under the control of the community. Or we might want to wrap that into the contract that art space needs to allow that to continue under said lease, that can be captured in multiple different ways.
And I'm in no way looking to destroy this lease and whatever, that's not the purpose. I just wanna make sure everybody is on the same page. While we're at it, why don't we clean the thing up so that it, it meets the needs of what reality is today versus what it was twenty years ago when this thing was written? And just to make sure we're all on the same page. Also, are, are there annual fire inspections or quarterly fire inspections going on? Cause that's part of the lease too.
So that's how we found out about said work.
Okay.
And then, we did, we did mobilize, um, myself and Greg, when we met, which Jerry and just kind of went over what needed to happen, that's when the permit was pulled. We do have an open permit, so that's not illegal to have an open permit, I don't wanna speak for Megan.
Yeah, and they just had another fire inspection, um, within the last two months, cause I was there during it, so that was pretty recent.
Yeah, so, and again, the board wants to talk about it, maybe I'm the only one that has these, uh, desires, but, uh.
No, I, I think it's appropriate to approach it, and it's our building, you know, we gotta make sure that it's, you know, we're not liable, even though they have insurance. I believe they have insurance.
They do, that's part of their requirement too, that they certainly have.
But still, yeah.
But if there were ever, if there were ever a tragedy.
Yeah, absolutely.
The town is responsible.
It's liable. But I also, I was under the impression that they already had a permit in place, so I guess you just said they don't have a permit for rebuilding, cause I know they.
It's the contractor, but they don't, we don't.
We have an open permit, that's, I'm looking at it now, it's waiting for additional information.
But the, the purpose of the motion that's set in front of us is to extend the current lease.
Yeah.
Right.
And that gives us time to address some of these issues before we update it with the terms that are the best.
But I don't know if we're looking at current lease.
That's what you're saying, is that the document in front of us is not the current?
The language needs to.
Yes, I don't know if it is, I think.
Well, okay, so the, that is the initial lease, and then there was two more tech, but, two more five-year extensions, which I need to, I will, I will gather it all and put it all together for you guys.
Okay. So no motion right now, and we should expect to see a motion soon that is an extension of the current lease while we're negotiating.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, there's no, there's no intention to say, oh, we're done, you know, it's not the.
Correct.
It's not the intent. Any other comments?
No.
All right. Uh, articles, I think so far, from what I saw on this list.
We don't have any.
There's two, a town report.
No, 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 I'm sorry. No, no, we don't, that's, uh.
I already did that, I'm not doing another.
Those are just notes, those are just like ghost notes in there. Um, no, we, we don't have any art, uh, we don't have any articles yet for you, but we have, I know there's a couple already in the works, so though, as they come in, you'll see this topic. I had, I, I, you know, I made this agenda two weeks ago, and they, hopes or expectations are maybe articles I had on.
Okay, keep talking, Greg, cause you're up again with the town administrator report.
All right, very good. Uh, kind of a lighter, uh, town administrator report when I'm on vacation, so, um, uh, a couple things that's just a highlight, you know, we, we, uh, we did say goodbye to Kelly Polichonik, who was the health agent, uh, for nine years, nine years. Um, she was part-time, but I think very active, especially in this last year. Um, so Kelly was great, you know, uh, she worked with the Board of Health, she was doing a lot of inspections around town, uh, but she's moved on. So now we are gonna get a new health agent, and for the moment, we will have, uh, Megan kind of alluded to some of the partnerships we have, particularly with Hudson. Um, so I'm, I'm encouraged by that, I look forward to it, but I also look forward to hiring process. Um, and Megan is advocating for an expansion of that role, which I am in agreement with. Uh, eight hours a week, which is what Kelly Polichonik was doing, was fine, but it wasn't really meeting our needs as a community. Um, and so we would like to expand that, and I'll get into that later when we figure out how to pay for it. Um, uh, we also, I have a question for the public, in case you're reading my town administrator's report, which I encourage everyone to do. We don't have a new assistant town clerk of Ms. O'Neill, um, unfortunately, she wasn't gonna stay with us. But we are back, uh, to the hiring process to find assistant town clerk, and the town clerk, Joanna Simeone, is, is working, is networking to try to find some, um, uh, part-time or volunteer basis to kind of help with that office. But we hope to keep the office as functional as possible, so it'll be, uh, relatively pain, painless for the community as best we can. That's it, I won't take up more of your time. I, I assume the board has read the, the, um, and seen the beautiful pictures on the town administrator's report. Unless there's something, there's no OMS note, do you wanna speak to it?
Um, oh, I think the remand hearing for one fifteen Main Street.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, you put that in.
Has been scheduled, um, so we're starting to advertise for that.
Sounds like it's a.
Pretty close, negotiating.
Moving toward the right direction.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah, I think, I, I, you know, the planning board's been working on it, um, you know, through town council, with the applicants' town council for a number of months. And it seems that, uh, things are going pretty well.
That's good news.
That's all, Mr. Chair.
So I got a question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I got a question in regards to, and, and the police department's reporter says that they're gonna be increasing foot patrol in downtown area.
Yeah.
So is, does that also incorporate, you know, issuing parking tickets? Cause I know Ronnie only works till like, like, three or four o'clock in the afternoon.
Good question. I'm looking at Megan. What do you think?
Um, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
We'll ask, that's a good question.
I mean, if they're gonna be patrolling, and they're gonna be in downtown area, might as well incorporate that since they're walking around, which is, which is a great idea.
I think it's more for community, I mean, that's why it's community outreach, it's, it's community policing, getting them, you know, involved in the.
No, it's just that we don't have enforcement.
Make it threats, not make it enemies.
Yeah, well, okay. Well, cause we don't have enforcement after Ronnie leaves, that's my, my point. So she's, once she's gone at three or four o'clock, there's not, nothing happening, you know, on Saturdays, there's no enforcement.
My, my question actually, um, and it's more for the parking authority, is, um, I, cause actually, it was funny, the other night, I was parking in the back parking lot, uh, to go to El Capil. And someone in front of me, they were struggling to try to find, um, coins to put in, and I said, it's okay, I said, cause it was Saturday night at six o'clock. And she said, oh, they, it says here, it's at four till eight.
Yeah, it's still, they haven't changed those yet.
Oh, but I, I, so I didn't correct it. It's okay, five, but, um, but that's, I thought we were, is that something that the parking authority is trying to look like?
Yeah.
Is clarifying their enforcement hours.
Yep, that, I mean.
It's supposed to be eight to five.
The hours have been confirmed, but the.
The meters are still showing.
Inconsistent signage, um, and so we do have a overall signage plan, but the individual signs on the meters, meters also need to reflect the same thing. And so we have been trying to chip away at it, but it is on our, on our, um, list to try to do. But that's, thank you for raising that, it's important. It to be, to be, you know, customer friendly is, is to be clear. You know, no one wants to be guessing what the rules are, cause you don't wanna make mistakes, so that's definitely our focus.
And then the other quick question I had on council and aging, it sounds like they're still doing remote meetings.
Right.
So, a lot of the towns already have opened up, is their, their plan, and when they're gonna open up, or they're not gonna open up?
I mean, um, I don't know what the plan is, i, if there's a definitive date yet. I know that, that there's, of course, I can accept, uh, an expected level of hesitancy to go back to full in-person, but I, I don't wanna speak for the council or, or Amy Lovell to say exactly what date. But it's been brought before, I've, I've asked her about it, and she's, and she's receptive to advising the council to come back in person and, and kind of hearing from the council on how they feel comfortable with, and the community at large. And when she goes to regional meetings and hear about how other councils steer, no, like, are other councils coming in person and whatnot? Um, and getting the building ready, I, I've seen that she's been coordinating with our assistant facilities manager, Kyle, to try to get the, the building ready again. But as we've brought up here before, they do share a building with the golf course, so there, there's, um, I, it's just not so straightforward when they can kind of, it's not their own building, so they can't control it as well. So there's some reluctance.
All right.
All right. Uh, next is chairman report, which I guess is me.
Actually.
We did revise the agenda, Mr. Chair.
Oh. Non, you didn't, oh, I'm sorry, I was skipping over that. Uh, yeah, approval of, uh, of the contract for the town administrator, the extension of the contract, the, uh, the approval of the new contract, uh, the renewal of the contract. So, uh, I think that we are pleased with the outcome of our negotiations with Greg. We appreciate the, um, you know, his consideration of our concerns, and, um, I think we had a, a good, pretty easy negotiation. And, uh, I think we're all pleased that, uh, we've come to an agreement with Greg on his contract to renew it for another three years. So congratulations, Greg, and with that, assuming that we will now vote to approve it, um, is there a, uh, I'm trying to see why this isn't, is there a motion?
Can you, did you refresh it? Is there a motion?
Uh, yeah, it did, it just came up.
Oh, sorry, okay, sorry.
I'll move to approve the town administrator contract for July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right, next, thank you.
unanimously, congratulations, Greg. Sorry about that.
No, no, I appreciate it.
Was not on my, on my list. Uh, chairman's report. A couple of quick comments, uh, first off, um, many of us, almost all of us, I think, um, Armin couldn't make it, but the Vic Tommel celebration, I wanted to comment on that. I thought that, um, over at Hawes Florist, uh, was a great, small little community event, I say small, it's pretty big.
Mm-hmm.
It just shows the level of respect and love to many, uh, that Vic has, um, and his contributions to our community over sixty years of business ownership and participation in government, and, um, to many of us, he's been, uh, invaluable relative to giving us advice. And whether asked for or not, Vic has never been shy in, uh, in sharing information. So I wanna congratulate Vic and thank everybody involved in, uh, that, uh, presentation. Chris did a great job with his, uh, with his words, and it was really.
Kate did a nice job too.
Good event, everybody did.
Yeah, it was on television, by the way, it was covered by the news at night, yeah.
They were there. Uh, secondly, I wanna congratulate the police department, as well as those children, uh, youngsters, who are attending their police academy this week. Um, I've seen the pictures that have been put out, and it looks like everybody's getting in shape and, uh, and, and having fun and learning. And, uh, that's, uh, it's exciting to see, and I'm happy for the police department, it's a great community policing issue. And, um, you know, to see two more police officers approved tonight, or one police officer in a special, um, I think they'll be a good addition as well. Uh, then lastly, I don't know how many of you ha, uh, have heard about the letter that went out from the Girl Scouts troop here in town to, uh, basically all of our seniors and in town, just letters of kindness that went out to them, done by, I think it was the Girl Scout troop, and there was another group involved. What was it, the, uh, like, the Honesty Society or something like that, that was?
I don't remember, yeah.
There's another group involved, I won't give credit where it's not due, but, uh, there was another group involved. And, uh, I think that for the people who I've seen comment on how they've been received, these letters, um, every, puts a smile on everybody's face. And, uh, that's what it is, and I think building bridges between generations is so important, and, uh, to have them work on that, uh, what a great idea. So congratulations to the Girl Scouts, and thank you to our seniors for, uh, for all they do for our community as well. So, that's it from me, and to the board, thank you for, um, giving me the opportunity to act as chair for this year. I look forward to a, a good year, and, uh, thank you for your support. Uh, Armin.
Um, all right, just a couple of things. I had the opportunity, first and foremost, we don't, if you're not aware, we, having meetings, um, uh, in regards to, um, public arts. And one of the last meetings that we were on, uh, someone had the idea about, um, possibly looking at doing something with the white building garage, uh, on Main Street across from Mill and Main. So we, we found out who the owners are, and I reached out, um, to the co-founder of, uh, Absalon that owns that place. And they were very receptive to allowing, um, to do something with that building to make it a little bit more attractive. And, um, in, during the process and conversations, we found out they've been there for twenty-five years, and, uh, they love the town. Uh, so I think it was, uh, was a nice conversation we had. And they also offered, they have public, they have restrooms there, so they said that if we ever need to have that, for public restrooms, they could, they could utilize that. So, uh, they willing to help work with us, and it's nice to get to know some of the owners in the mill, especially someone that's been there for twenty-five years. So they're very receptive, and they're gonna allow whatever the art space or whoever is gonna come up with some idea. I know, um, Eric Hansen's involved with that, uh, can, Maynard has a canvas, so he's gonna do something in regards to that too. So anyway, so that was a nice, um, was a nice conversation that we had. Um, the other thing that I noticed, and I think it was also in the TA report, uh, seems like some, a lot of dumping has been taking place in Maynard. Um, and some of it has been cleaned up, and some of it hasn't been cleaned up. Um, I, one was by the old Bank of America ATM, and now there's a mattress by the Absalon building, sitting there for, for, for days. So it seems like whenever they, you know, people are dumping around buildings, there have been, you know, uh, left behind, and they don't look good. So people are using it as a dump site, so it, it's not a good site, but I don't know what could be done about it. Um, and I know at the Bank of America, we reached out to the owner, Leo, and he got it cleaned up, I believe. You did it, or they did it? They did it there, cause.
There's been, uh, areas I know down.
Yeah, by U2, by U-Mo, yeah, yeah.
Road, the area across from where they're developing.
Developing Parker, yeah.
There is, there was also, for at least two weeks, there was, um, old laundry baskets with water jugs, empty, that were left at the bottom of those hill, um, sitting on the sidewalk. Um, I think it's just somebody or some people who don't want to, uh, put it in their own trash for whatever reason.
Yeah. Um, the other, uh, piece, and I think David, you and I spoke about this, um, and the numbers that you shared with me regards to cannabis revenue, it's a little disappointing.
Yeah.
Um, and we have to be cautious, um, about in the future what's going on with. Um, and we have to be cautious, um, about in the future what's going on with anybody else that comes to us, uh, for agreements. So, and I know there's, the, one of the companies you're gonna be hearing pretty soon, Win3DC, a presentation, um, and I'm sure they're gonna be pursuing, uh, toward the agreement. So, we gotta be careful how we, you know, go forward with this, cause if the revenues are not there, and I would, I wouldn't be surprised if most of them came from Green Star, um, that's basically what I'm looking at. That's the way I see it, cause that's, that's the one that's, has the most, uh, success. Um, and then the last thing is, I know we're gonna be meeting for the goal setting, and I would urge everybody that hasn't had the opportunity to read the surveys that's in, in the master plan. Um, I went through a lot of those surveys, there's some information in there that we could probably look at and utilize in our goal setting, because there's some concerns and some good stuff, and, um, if you haven't read it, it's quite a lot, but it's good to be able to look at the survey and, and get some ideas. Um, I had other things, but I think I'm gonna just wait on that. One of the things I'm gonna be meeting with, uh, Greg and Justin on Thursday in regards to some of my observations, so we're gonna talk about that, um, you know, you're probably gonna hear more about that later. That's it.
Justine? I don't have anything other than to say thank you, everyone, for, um, a great year, and, uh, and congratulations to David, uh, and congratulations to Jeff again, um, but no, that's all I have for the morning.
Thank you, thank you, Justin.
What's that?
I said, Mr. Park, better off.
Thank you, Justine. Uh, I had a few things. I attended the Board of Health meeting with a particular interest to listen to the response to some of the communication we received a few weeks ago about PFAS and aerial spraying for mosquitoes. Uh, I, I have a good deal of confidence that, that come next year, when that opt-in, opt-out period comes up, that they'll have a, a full bank of information for us regarding, um, hopefully not just the, you know, the PFAS content, which I believe the state is working on, but also information about the spraying itself and its, um, impact on the town. I know Justin also spoke about PFAS, uh, in the water, as he did at this meeting tonight. Um, one question I had, I know we have up online a fair amount of information about PFAS, but I, I didn't see, or I don't know to what extent we have information about the mosquito spraying and the different formats of treatment we have, and I'm wondering if we could get something more clear or updated on that, um, just for people to go to, so, you know, the way the Board of Health was talking, it was more for what we're doing for the, um, a full, you know, nine months from now going into that opt-in period, but there's still a concern out in the community about the spraying, and to get a fact sheet about, just to, you know, um, what isn't, what is not true around that would be helpful. So, is that something that we could do?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, um, and I, I'm, uh, you know, I, I think the PFAS one that Justin is, is working on looks good, but the spraying one, I think, still would leave a lot of questions if you're going to it with that concern. Um, how you wanna cover the intersection between the spraying and PFAS, I'm not quite so sure, but at least for the, the spray itself. Um, I attended the multi-select board meeting, um, that the Town of Pepperell invited to us on sustainability issues. Um, we're, we're behind on a lot of different sustainability, um, uh, type of goals, um, which the silver lining of that is, a lot of these things, I think, if we were to look at other towns and what they have done, we can take and recreate, um, and I know, uh, you know, David, you had mentioned previous attempts on community choice aggregation, et cetera, but I think these are things that are worth revisiting again, um, new stretch building codes were put into the most recent environmental legislation, so certainly something that we should, um, re-review. Uh, I know that we've, I've been pressuring Greg to either stand up a sustainability committee, um, or to reactivate a Green Maynard Committee, or to empower another committee to, to take on and, and help with some of the footwork on this, and I think it, um, would potentially have helped us do some of the footwork around the solar panels as well, and maybe mitigated some of those issues at at least an earlier stage, um, or, or, you know, downplayed, or gotten some more information spread, uh, laterally, um, a little more smoothly if we had some people doing that. Um, so, uh, but they went everywhere from building codes, community choice aggregation, down to, you know, um, providing opportunities for renters to do composting, it's easier for your homeowner, but if you want to compost as a renter, um, to get involved in programs like that, so, uh, something I still would like to push for. Um, I also stopped by the farmer's market, I talked to the individuals who were doing the, um, they're going to be putting a petition out, assistance petition out for a town meeting warrant for a plastic bag ban, and they wanted to come and present to us just so that we had a chance to ask questions of them, so I'm hoping we could make space for them on a, on a agenda coming up.
Are they planning on doing that for the special town meeting coming up?
They're planning to do it for the fall town meeting, so I believe they're, um, about to start collecting signatures, is my understanding.
It was nice to see their tent up there on Saturday when I, I went by to the afternoon, yeah.
Yep, for, for Green Maynard?
Green Maynard.
Yes, yes, absolutely, so, um, I think it would just, any, any, this is a petition comes up for us to have a good understanding of what the issue is and have a chance to ask questions, so. Uh, the charter review committee has met again, there, um, we really went into, speaking of town meeting, um, and, and FinCom, which is obviously highly tied to the town meeting, there were some, um, major questions about redefining the scope and role of the FinCom. I don't think with enough specificity that, um, I'll bring it to this group yet, but, um, they're, they're really, you know, going back to fundamentals. Um, one thing they, FinCom representatives did request is to find a way in the timeline to get more time for them to review non-budgetary sort of articles, so I think the budget process, they're happy with getting enough time. I think, um, they're a little concerned getting enough time to review some of the more last-minute articles that aren't necessarily tied to the normal budget process, so I think we'll, we'll take a look at that timeline and see what we can do, but just to give you a quick update on that. Uh, and then, again, my congratulations to Vic, um, I had a chance to speak to him, and just a font of wisdom. Uh, and, uh, that was, that was, the whole event was enjoyable, but getting a couple of minutes to speak to him, and I've, I've sat in there and watched you guys up here and, and listened to him ask questions, and just, the depth and breadth of knowledge is impressive. Um, and then finally, I wanted to congratulate, um, the Doyle's on the opening of Sanctuary last weekend. I, I had the pleasure of joining them for their opening night, and, uh, so it's, it's good to see them back in action, and they have a, a rather extensive list of programming coming up for the fall, so best of luck to them.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's it for me.
Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
All right.
Do you have any idea of what the administration might have suggested?
I can go back here if you want, this is, cause I have-
Like the landscape?
Hey, good job, Justin.
So, we've got some other-
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you, Justin.
Like the landscape picture, kinda?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I have this desk, so we can do, we can do either.
Yeah, I don't know.